Is there some verbiage we could follow or?
What did you just said?
It's just a work session.
Yeah.
So at nine oh seven, we're calling this work session open and we're gonna turn it over to Tim.
Okay. Good morning Commissioners, welcome to your first public meeting. We are here today to begin the BOCC training that Lake County staff have put together for you. So we'll do an overview of the statutory requirements of the Board of County Commissioners. One question I do have at the beginning. It is at the discretion of the Board if you would like the work sessions to be recorded and then posted to YouTube. Previous Board, some were recorded for the benefit of staff. Some were recorded for the benefit of the community to listen into later. We do not have a solidified policy on that, so that is up to the Board and your your desire. So we're, all of the agendas will be posted. We made some tweaks to presentations for this week over the weekend, so we will get all of those PowerPoints posted as well publicly, but up to you if you want the meeting recorded and posted.
For now, I say we go as much transparency, public access as possible. That sounds good to you guys?
Yeah, there's no harm in doing that, I feel.
And for some reason, we need to make a change down the road. For unforeseen reasons, we can press our bridge and get to it. But for now, I say we go as open and public as possible.
Yeah, recorded and posted.
Alright, okay, thank you for the guidance.
I want to speak to Mr. Day.
Mr. Day is here. iPhone one twenty-seven. So normally, and we'll, we'll get more into the, into these and later work sessions this week. So you know, just a broad overview, the point of a work session is to educate and inform the Board. So you guys can deliberate on any topic you guys choose fit. So things you wanna learn more about, more contentious topics, or mundane, maybe more mundane things of operations of Lake County Government. So the work sessions are meant to be informative. Commissioners do not make a decision during these meetings, you don't take a vote. However, you can provide staff guidance. We'd like to see more of this. We would like this, we need a deeper dive with this partner, tho- those kind of things. So you can provide guidance and staff will work on getting those next work sessions teed up, questions from the Board. So presenters or whoever's coming can be best prepared to, to meet with the Board. Usually during work sessions, you don't take public comment. A lot of, you know, work sessions, it depends on when we, you know, when the Board chooses to do them, right? Some of the bigger ones like the OHV ordinance, town halls, through the big evening meeting at CMC, a big evening meeting upstairs at the courthouse, where there's more of an opportunity to have dialogue with the public. But for other ones, it's kind of whoever is presenting, whether it's staff, external partner, kind of that, it's the, the Board and that presenter. Is the way we've been doing it. Not saying you can't or shouldn't take public comment, but just if want. Do you wanna go over the binders real quick?
Sure. Uh, so we made binders for each of you. Um, we have and if there's a table of contents at the beginning, here up on your left is org chart for each of the departments in the county. And then, so the first red one is your CCI, chapter one and two. These are really like statutory requirements, rules of the Board ethics. The gray is going to be cheat sheet for Roberts rules. So when you make a motion, when you need a second. And then general procedures for the BOCC meeting, so roll of the chair, how you make a motion, et cetera. Then it goes into like how you call an executive session and then all of our current financial policies within the county. And then we have budget overview, so the timeline of our budget, what our funds are. So the blue one is gonna be all about our budget. And then the orange and then the tan green color are all gonna be memos that each of our departments or our elected offices, well, some of our elected offices decided to do it, some did not, giving you an overview of who they are, what they do, what their budget is. We also put important acronyms, 'cause you're gonna be learning a bunch of acronyms and it's really hard to remember. So each of these will have, whenever we start talking, an alphabet soup, what you do, so.
Lauren, is a lot of this what was also emailed to us?
Yes.
Can, it's?
Yeah, so I'll share you on a Teams channel that has all of this electronically. Some people do better with paper, where you can write notes, et cetera. So we wanted to make sure you had them both in paper and electronic. So yeah, the cream is gonna be all your departments set up by kind of how we separate them. So Health Human Services has Public Health, Human Services, Veteran Services, et cetera. Community Development has CP, sorry, Community Planning and Development, Airport, et cetera. And then the green tab is kind of your legislative tab, so how a bill becomes a law, what we have adopted internally about what, how we get involved in bills and what is the level of engagement. And then some CCI priorities. The last one is a bill we're actually running this year, is Lake County, related to our jail. So, um, yeah, feel free to add to this, but I wanna make sure you have everything electronically and in paper form.
Thank you so much.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you Lauren. So we know that you all have been at the CCI training, CTSI trainings, going over, you know, statutory role of the Board of County Commissioners. So we're going to go over some of those things again, just as a reminder, help, help sync things in. And then also provide, you know, Lake County context and then answer any questions you all might have of what about this, what about that? And go through that way. So for the role of the Board of County Commissioners, so there's kind of four big chunks of the way we have seen it as governance and policymaking. So later in February, when we do the Board retreat, we'll be really working with the Board on what is the strategic direction of Lake County. Alright, so there's a, you know, short term, sure, next couple months, but really like long term, where is this community going in the next, you know, five, ten plus years, by decisions that the Board will make during your tenure. You also have the ability to enact local legislation, which is in ordinance, and then you oversee the budget and finances. There's administrative oversight, which is contracting and procurement. So you know, how the county does business with various entities, whether it's an IT contract, the greater agreements with Microsoft for the software we use, HP for the hardware we use, contracting for professional services, you know, the recreation center feasibility study, whole host of other things. And of course, representation and advocacy, so representing the folks of Lake County, collaborating with other governmental entities. And then, you know, repping us at a, you know, a local, of course, but also regional, statewide and federal level of issues that impact Lake County. Then you have our, we have our statutory responsibilities. So you gotta implement state laws if the state comes down with something. One thing you'll probably hear staff talk a lot about is unfunded mandates when the state makes a decision, but there's no money with it. But the county shall do this, so we have to do it, but just don't get any funding for it. So we gotta figure out how to do that, conduct public hearings. So the public hearings, you know, can be from things as germane perhaps, or normalized, like liquor licensing hearings. So anybody in our community, Twin Lakes General Store to Mount Massive Liquors to Safeway, all have local liquor licenses. So you do a public hearing for that and then you're also the licensing authority for that. Have they followed all the laws? Are they in good standing? Things like that. You're also the licensing authority for marijuana establishments and what's the other sin? Nicotine, there we go. Nicotine. There's lots of other sin that you guys can regulate as well, we'll get into that. And anytime during this, if you guys have any questions, please feel free to ask. And we want this to be more of a dialogue, we wanna talk at you, we wanna, you know, get you comfortable with these, with these roles.
And licensing all those under Lauren, is that correct or no?
It lives under Liz.
Liz, excuse me.
In operations, yeah, yeah.
Could you give me an example of when the previous Board may have denied a license for somebody?
I don't think they ever did.
Not that I recall typically, I mean, there may be some circumstances or conditions, but a lot of the existing licenses have been in place for a while. The newest ones are the tobacco retail licenses that are just now getting started and they're capped at the, at the existing retailers. That sell those products now, so you're unlikely to get applications for new licenses on that, so most of them will be renewal. And the conditions of that licensing is set by statute. So any decision making in terms of whether or not you approve the renewal will be most likely based on whether or not they complied with their conditions during the previous term type of thing.
And the, the term tobacco covers faith and everything like that?
Yes, yes, it's got a pretty broad expansive definition. In terms of Tim's comment about operations handling the licensing that used to be handled through the clerk and recorder's office and they decided they were not going to do that anymore. So Liz bravely took that on and has set up actually some better processes for handling those license applications and rules.
Was that required of the clerk in the county or was that just a cultural norm?
It depends on your interpretation.
I think that's a big subject.
Yeah.
I mean, they talked about it at CCI and they said that it's pretty broad that plenty of them don't do it. And you can't hold a clerk in a quarter to
You can't make them.
You can't make them do it.
It's not required, it's in statute.
But a lot of the websites, the state-based websites and stuff for licensing and stuff if you go out there, they say hello clerks.
The clerk's corner, yeah.
Because they, a lot of the locales aren't here often, so we'll just differ.
Helping us establish our new procedures, the Chaffee County Clerk and Recorder was extremely helpful
Yes.
in helping us establish all of that, the procedures and policies for, for doing it. Yeah, so there's, as you all will learn, you guys have some pretty big statutory roles that can cause some tension with other elected officials. Yes. But overall, you know, for the most part, we all work pretty well together, most of us. Alright, so we have broken this up into shall, may and may not. So when you are reading statute, semantics are very, very important. So shall, you have to do this, you will do this. And so these are, these are the big ones that the Board of County Commissioners shall do. So you know, on Friday, you will elect the Chair for this year. Statutorily, you are required to meet at least once a month, adopt the budget, you set the tax levies. So that is when you set the mill levy for property taxation. The Board can also refer something to the community to vote on, you know, like a sales tax increase or something like that. The Board can refer things to the community. The Board also needs to enforce state statute, like you said, conduct public hearings, adopt resolutions, ordinances and proclamations, and we'll take a deeper dive into each of those. But resolutions are kind of your, your day-to-day, you know, the Board resolves to adopt the twenty twenty-five budget. And you go through all the process, public posting, public hearing on all of that, so that's what a resolution is. In ordinance is a local law, so it's the law of Lake County.
To ordain.
To ordain, yes.
To ordain.
To ordain.
The shall be.
Yes, and so that, that has a whole long process to it, would you say three-month process?
Usually, 'cause there are a couple of different public hearings that are public, you know, law hearings, meetings that have to take place by statute.
Then adopting proclamations, right, so the Board, you know, let's do a proclamation of gratitude and thanks for, to Howard Tritz for his almost century of public service in Lake County. Things like that. And we talked about it briefly, but we'll take a deeper dive in on contracting and procurement at authority and then the local licensing authority, which we just discussed. So the mayes. Do you wanna take team this one? You wanna, you wanna go through?
These lines, yeah, we
So there are things that you may do, you don't have to, but you have the statutory authority to do. So debt, so we do have the power, or the county does have the power to incur debt, enter contracts, receive grants and gifts. So with that, right, you, I think you guys have all heard about Tabor, the Taxpayer Bill of Rights. And the county can't incur debt without a vote of the people, so going for a bond or something like that. But what you can do, and what the previous Board did with the certificate of participation that will be used to renovate the courthouse and the jails is a way to do that because we essentially put this facility up as collateral. So you can think of it as, it's like as a mortgage, right? Is what the eight million dollars in borrowing was. So there's a way that the county can incur debt that way by not having to go to a vote of the people. By using that. So we can enter into contracts, sometimes that could, use, technically cause debt, but we owe something to someone, right?
Yeah, and you'll hear later in the contract, like we, there are provisions that have to be in those contracts, like there's some provisions that say, you know, this contract's, you know, conditioned on annual appropriations. If it's something that's gonna be on the existing fiscal year for the county, that's full pay, plan which it needs to go in there or five we take and stuff. Multi-year obligations are typically, we try to avoid those, but when we do, it's in our best interest financially or whatever procurement purposes, we'll put that provision in there so that you, you don't bind an additional board. That's one thing you can't do. So you know, the contracts y'all make can be, you know, amended by any future boards of County Commissioners. So some of them, and you'll see when we talk about Airport too, is that you'll have, you know, multi-multi-year obligations. Like if somebody's going to build an airport hangar, in order to make that pencil for them financially, they need a ground lease, it's gonna be more than a couple of years type of thing. So you'll see certain language in those that allows you, what I call the ultimate wiggle room, to get out of it if it's not in the county's best interest. We're working towards that, I would just say that not all of our past contracts have been crafted in that way and we've encountered some issues with that, so.
So with this new, I'm gonna call it debt, 'cause I don't know another word to use. This new debt for the courthouse renovations, that's something that it's been written in that we can't get out of it in the future? Can you explain, like, can you go into that a little more, Chris? Like use that as the example of where the wiggle room is, how did the Board not bind us to this, et cetera?
To some extent, you have. The way you get out of it in the future would be you'd have to pay it back in, in the lump sum. It's kind of like a reverse mortgage. If that's something you can identify a little better with, in that the county essentially technically transferred ownership of this building in order to get those funds and we get the ownership back once those funds or the, the advanced in terms of certificate of participation funds are paid off. And it's amortized over twenty-five years. To do that, can you always pay it off early, just like any other type of loan or obligation and such? So that's why in terms of, when it comes to incurring debt though, you can't just say, oh, we're not gonna pay you anymore. The, if that were to happen, essentially you would have the trustee be able to foreclose on this building.
And it's cold outside.
Yeah.
So the
Not, not necessarily a huge market for this building, but still, it's not a position you'd ever wanna be in, even just the optics of it.
So the certificates have been sold?
Yes, we had a very successful couple hour sales of all of this, yeah.
To multiple investors or? And then can you share the terms of that agreement with us? The interest rate, the get, the payment?
It's, I'd say, yeah, we definitely, we have a whole folder on that if you want to.
Yeah.
You need any nighttime sleeping incentives, the documents are very complicated and technical.
It's kind of the opposite, this keeps me up at night.
Yeah.
Thinking about this, so yeah, I'd like to learn as much as I can about, you know, where, where every opportunity, we're gonna have to pay this thing off as fast as possible.
I'm saying we could do a quick side, we could do a summary for y'all, just
On the thirtieth, we have the schedule to go over that among other kind of county issues.
Yeah.
Speaking of the thirtieth, the CCI has requested one of us to come down and attend the
Just steering committees.
Yeah, this, and I, as I understand, there's a vote on thirty-first, so are we gonna, is that conflicting with our training? So I guess we could vote, you know, they're expecting us to vote.
Yeah, so we, we're gonna talk a little bit more about that on Friday, when we talk about like the Board appointments. So we don't need to, we don't need to put those in the annual resolution, but it is good for staff to know, you know, who will be the county designee. Granted, you know, if all three of you show up, there's only one for, for Lake County.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, all of those kind of things. So it will defer to the Board on what you would like to do, but for the CCI, you know, steering committees, those are for their, well, big group, right, legislative priorities and things like that. So we can, you know, if a Commissioner wants to go or the Board wants to go, that's fine and we can, we can reschedule things or, you know, we can, you guys also have the ability to send a proxy. So it'll be up for the Board, but something for you three to think about this week and then on Friday, we can get that decision and go from there.
Quick question out of that then, the Regional Housing Authority meets before we determine who is going to be on the Regional Housing Authority?
Yes.
So how does that, how do we manage that gap?
Um, I was told that they were going to reschedule that meeting.
Okay, I suppose.
So what I did, I reached out to Councilperson Hill this morning, so I will confirm that. But yeah, I was under the impression it was going to be moved, but
Only they had as of last night, that's why I was asking.
Alright.
Is there a list of all the Board meetings somewhere and is there a way we can talk about it before we have to make the decision?
Um, the talking about it will need to be done in a
In, in here?
Yep.
Yeah.
For Friday.
Is there a big, a grand list somewhere we can kind of look and?
Yeah, so it's in your packet for Friday. And we can, we can get two hard copies as well, so you guys can think about those.
The packet is, has been sent to us in?
Yep, it's in Teams, yeah.
In Teams, okay.
Thank you.
Um, and then just on that note, Commissioner Lee writes, for our long-range financial plans, that COP payment has been built in, in our three, five and ten-year plans. So we have the, we have that payment built in. And, but we'll, on the thirtieth, we can take a deeper dive on that.
Cause the built-in payment just paying the minimums back or is it?
Yes, yeah, yep. And you know, as we, you know, start this work with the, the architect and really getting this process going, you're probably in the next three months, we'll have a, you know, an idea of like the cost of where there is, you know, the, this is a Board of County Commissioners project, right? So the sheriff understands that, like ideally, he would like four new help, four to six new holding cells, he might get two. The courts will be interesting to work with, but I think they also have realized what Lake County's budget is and what we can do. So I guess we can work on the heat, we can work on extra security up there, but things like that. The windows have been a priority and then I also talked with the architect about Commissioner Rowe so that we can remove those, eliminate those doors between your offices and then also resize the offices so that they're all about the same size. And then the architect will also meet with the DA to talk about her desires. But I think her office is pretty good, maybe some remodel down there, but it is a pretty decent-sized space. And so, and on that note, to think about another kind of debt, if you will, would be grants. A lot of grants are reimbursable grants. So whether it's goal or get outdoors lead bill or the county manager grant that the Board received to start this position, those are receivable, so you have to pay and then you get the money paid back to you. So there's other things, you know, to consider when looking at grant opportunities, also know if there's a grant match, what the reimbursable terms are, things like that. The county may have an airport, which we do, so we work closely with the FAA on expansion of anything at the airport. So in twenty twenty, the runway was completely repaved. Senators Bennett and, it was Gardner at the time advocated for and we received the full funding to repave our runway. Since then, we have worked on building out taxi lanes so that hangars can be built, which would be a land lease with the county. And so then folks would have like a long-term thirty, thirty-five-year land lease to, you know, Um and so then folks could would have like a long-term thirty, thirty-five year land lease uh to, you know, build their own hangars. And then, you know, with that, um you know, you would attract folks who would wanna land here, purchase their fuel here, um purchase their merchandise here, uh those kind of things. We have, we have an airport.
The airport fairly self-sustaining.
A hundred percent, yeah. Um the the general fund over the past couple of years has contributed um parts or partial funding
Okay.
to like new snow removal equipment, um and then for a a de-icer, but that is with the airport fund paying the general fund back. So we can do those inter-fund kind of transfers um that way.
Cool.
With with the FAA being the ultimate authority of the airport, is there ever an example of them passing an unfunded mandate of something we have to do to keep the airport to code or up to stuff that we're on the hook for?
I would say everything, you know, everything, and if we don't do it, yeah, yeah.
Anything moving, yeah, all all of it, right, the tourist scene, yeah.
Yeah.
It it passes through, and it's not, I the FAA does get, or has been getting substantial grant funding and stuff like that.
Yeah.
They can pass through to help with those. There's no guarantee that continuing, but yeah, most of it is pass through of in order to operate the airport, you have to comply with the regulations regardless of how they change it.
Yeah. What happens if we get a grant for more than than what we have on hand? You know, you say like w- we incurred debt to support a grant, and then they pay us back. What happens if we had a grant that was like for more than what we could pay for? Would we have to just refuse that and be like, oh, we can't afford that free money?
Yeah. Yep. So for for example, the uh Goco grant for the pump track down in uh Huck Finn. Um we did, the county did a lot of in-kind work, so meaning road and bridge did some earthwork. Um that kind of, so that counted towards our grant match. We used some funding for it, but the pump track itself did not cost as much um as the full grant award. So we're gonna reimburse what we actually spent, and then that remaining money stays with Goco. And Goco is Get Outdoors Colorado, which is funded by the Colorado Lottery.
How does that uh land lease work? So is it that thirty-five year lease, they build their own hangar out of their own pocket, and then they pay us a rent on that land lease for thirty-five years, and then what happens?
If the, when the the lease terminates, then any improvements will work to the county.
Mm-hmm. Hmm.
So they build it, and then if the lease terminates, we own those improvements, and that's happened at least one other situation. But the type of facility that the hangars are aren't necessarily, and and that's why you need to be thoughtful about how long you want those terms to last because uh the life of the facility might be less than what the term is, and they leave and it's yours, then you pretty much have to, you know, deal with an empty building.
Certainly.
The other aspect of that though too is looking at revenue generation for that, and that's why I all made a point, we did a study, airport study last year to look at what the market rent should be for both ground leases for people to build their own hangars, as well as retail lease rates for the hangars that we own. We own one already that's leased out that way, and whether it would make sense as a revenue generator for economic development to build another community hangar that you could lease out, you know, for night or or whatever, to provide more of a revenue stream up there.
Mm-hmm.
So that it's not just being self-sustaining, but it's actually contributing to the offers.
And there's definitely um opportunity there, as Pickham, Eagle, even Rifle airports uh fill up with their jet traffic.
We got a lot of dirt to move though.
We got a lot of dirt to move, but you know, um people who are.
You can make that a part of the ground lease, asset too for improvement, and it's their responsibility.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, the, you know, people who own Goldstreams don't really care where their crew goes, so and they can come here.
Right.
And the, is there interest in building? I remember Tom Charles has expressed interest.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there's a, there's lots of interest, um locally and.
Yeah. The the hope is that we're in the planning phase for the layout right now, because you don't wanna just say, oh yeah, we'll give you a lease and you can go whatever you want.
Hmm.
Yeah.
So um we have Mean Hunt are helping work with the airport to design the layout for those things. And then the plan is to put that in our P for people to bid on building, for those, to get those ground leases to build those hangars. So we also have the opportunity to attract the ones that have the 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 most offer, if you will, in the county.
But somebody's working on the site plan.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
With the FAA and uh and uh.
Uh should we go out now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um it'll already be compliant.
What about the the park up there? There's there's sewer in the road, is that right, or or just water?
Um just water. Uh currently, the airport is on a septic system. Um so you know, it would be a very large infrastructure project, but uh you know, if the board would like to leverage, I think there's over three hundred acres up there, and a lot of those acres wouldn't even impact any of the rec assets up there. So archery, and dirt bike track, gun ranges, bike trails, all of that. Still a lot of land to work with. Uh want to work on incentivizing an airport business or airport industrial park, but a big piece of that would be an extension of sanitation um up to that area, and then probably three-phase power. Um currently, there's water up there. There's also a thought, I don't know if Michael uh talked about it with you guys on the tour, but we do have that gravel pit out there. Where the current road and bridges up on East Twelfth, and um if we move that nineteen fifty-five facility, everything's built nineteen fifty-five, there's a theme. You know, if we if we move that uh, you know, facility perhaps out to um, you know, the gravel pit. Um there's a way to kind of like incentivize that infrastructure, and perhaps working with federal dollars um for that public works project. But then you also free up that choice land right there, whether for workforce and affordable housing or solid and market rate. Um but it it frees up that and then removes that industrial stuff from the middle of town, you know, middle edge of town.
Mm-hmm.
And I I know that the sanitation district is looking at doing some additional planning to perhaps move their facilities down across the road from that entryway.
Yes.
And so that would be incentive for them to extend their facilities out that way too, so there might be some good, you know, collaborative opportunities.
They wanna move across the road?
Yes.
No, cuz they'll under the road.
So taking. Yeah.
It's difficult coming into the highway.
Well, and take, yeah, so taking the the dump station may, that would be the first big piece, but having that down towards the plant.
Hmm.
Uh and then we have, we'll uh when Ann from Community Planning and Development uh presents, we'll talk about the um mobility and uh transportation infrastructure uh planning work that's ongoing right now. So that was something that Commissioner Fiedler received to um work hard on, and then ultimately the county received a grant um of MMOF, multimodal operational funding from CDOT, Colorado Department of Transportation. Um so that study is looking at that junction, so the CMC turn um right there, pedestrian safety. And we've been pulling it even farther down to the Mineral Belt uh trail crossing there by the car wash, the northern gateway to town. So um kind of we've we've extended it from where mountain, the turn is for Mountain View Estates um all the way through to Mountain View to the stoplight in town of what that looks like. Because there's a land use application right now called the Gateway Project, which would be huge out by Mountain Valley Estates. Um and then just what is that, you know, the ninety-one, twenty-four intersection, um and then all the way into town, right? Like pedestrian access, um managing that uh the stoplight traffic, what does it look like if rail yard continues to develop um planning there, um two, one, two, was there, uh an alternate route for a truck route? There are three study zones, Gateway, CMC, maybe it is just those three.
Does Gateway refer to um a planned development, or is that a, okay.
Yep.
Is that the one behind Tenth Mountain Division over there by the power lines?
It was like going towards the inner.
Like behind Safeway?
Okay.
That kind, yes, um.
Like behind Safeway.
Okay. That's that uh backcountry place, isn't it?
It's one of um that landowner's ideas, yes, but the the gateway is um here where that turn is to Mountain Valley Estates and the Bureau of Reclamation of Water Treatment Plant down there. So then you have where Mountain Valley Estates is, there's a lot of property right here.
That that's what we're talking about.
Yeah.
The old dome.
No.
Oh.
Um farther farther out.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a multi-family, uh multi-building, three-story apartment complex.
That was an initial draft um that we have seen, um but I think they're back, they are back at uh sketch working with Community Planning and Development on that.
Hmm.
Gosh, that area has been all over the place. I remember it was like indoor water park, and then now it's like, you know, backcountry skiing, you know, human powered and.
Yes, yeah. Yeah.
And now they're back to the drawing board again.
Yes.
Wow. It'll be interesting to watch unfold.
Yeah. Um counties may um establish broadband or telecommunications services. So what Lake County did um was partner with SKED, which is the Southern Colorado Economic Development Corporation. Um and contributed to expanding broadband broadband internet services in Lake County. So that's where you see Vero coming from, as part of um the investment we made with SKED and them expanding here. Um so instead of the county providing that service, we just provided um some funding to get Vero um up here. The board and the county also have the power of condemnation and eminent domain. Um so if there is, you know, I don't know, of course, they'll have to defend us in court, but if there's a higher and better use for land that the county sees, county can condemn it for the public good and welfare. Um.
Fortunately, that's most often used as a negotiating tool because it's incredibly expensive and time wasting, if you will, to go through the the condemnation process. We had to threaten that with the the southern purchase, where we weren't gonna build the justice center and the new civic railroad. Um but then they, because the terms they wanted were egregious, so we said, okay, we're just gonna take it then, and they're like, wait, man, let's talk. And so we were able to negotiate better terms with them for that. It it's not something we aim to do often, if at all.
Yeah.
And where where was that parcel?
That's the southern parcel next to the Circle K. Um it's the Monroe side.
On Monroe.
Right before it turns.
Yeah, right before it turns.
And we still own that?
Yes.
And it's contaminated or rumored to be contaminated?
Yes, so um tying into the next one, acquisition and disposal of uh real property. So the county um can purchase property, um which, you know, the board has done, or the previous board has done. Um so you know, you have the the ability to do that. Um the Monroe site does have, um we have done every, we have, we've not remediated the site, but we have uh received the brownfield grants, we know what's wrong with the site. Um we know where, we think we're we're pretty certain where the mine shafts are underneath the site, uh cuz there are several. Um and um there are a couple other, you know, things with the property that, you know, we've done a historical analysis. We'd have like a state architect come out and like see if there is, you know, stage historical um uh significance for it. They didn't find anything but leg, so uh we had plenty of that. Um so we know, we know all the things that uh, you know, kind of are are wrong with it. There are options, you know, for the board. The, you know, the board could uh sell it, um the board could put housing there, uh amphitheater, park, um.
You want amphitheater?
Amphitheater, like a Dylan, you know, could, because the best way to deal with the environmental contamination is to cap it with concrete, so it doesn't go anywhere.
Oh. Yeah, yeah.
And the view shed for that would be phenomenal, just like in in Dylan, the that amphitheater type thing.
Yeah.
If we end up having the ability to do that, we'd be able to fund the grants and stuff.
Yeah. Yeah.
With the stage facing west?
Yes, well, the stage would be at the bottom, and then so you'd have the amphitheater part going, cuz it's a hill, the topography.
Oh, yeah.
That's one of the things that makes it a hard site to build on is the topography of it.
Hmm.
Um so that if you tiered it up, the stage down at the bottom, tier up, then the attendees would have the view of of some of those.
Here on the west, yeah.
Make some noise issues with pushing all that sound up the hill towards Lidersky's place.
She would love it.
I wonder why the water would shed off of that.
Well, and that's that's part of the issue though, cuz you've got the the ditch that runs through that.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Um that, so we can't build on all of it anyway, because there's a section that's segregated by a ditch that runs through.
Yeah. There are also, you know, opportunities, uh they're called brownfield grants. So for parcels that are contaminated, there is federal uh funding. Historically has been, we'll see if that continues, but um to be able to help remediate. So for the West Third and West Sixth, um Workforce and Affordable Developments that the county's been working on, we use brownfield grants to remediate those two parcels. Um and we do have a great, and we'll talk about this when we um when we do your Board of Health uh training and onboarding. But we do have a great relationship with the EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency, and then the State Department of Public Health and Environment as well for those funding opportunities. Um. Uh so yeah, um.
Who generally writes those grants?
Staff, so we have, we, yeah, we do have a grant administrator on staff, so she helps uh like research, research grant opportunities
I'm gonna say, some secret person.
kind of work with the subject matter expertise, like let's say if it's a grant for the landfill and recycling center on expanding to compost, right? She's not an expert in that, but Robin, our landfill foreman, is, so she'll work with staff to get that information, draft something. Sometimes they are very specialized, so it's, you know, that staff, that staff person like drafts it with the assistance of of the grants administrator.
And who's that?
Catherine, Catherine Greer, yeah. Um then we touched on it a little bit, but debt for construction and maintenance. Um so and this is the one that, you know, will requires the vote. So essentially, this is going for a bond. The board could refer something to the public for a vote of the people, um you know, for for a bond uh or for, you know, taxes for something. Which I think in twenty sixteen was when the county uh tried for um sales tax increase to pay for a new community justice center. That failed, and here we are. Continuing with our maze, so emergency telephone service or E nine-one-one. So through the Public Utility Commission at the state, which governs uh rates set by utility providers in the state. So Excel, Black Hills Energy, Sung De Cristo, things like that. They also regulate um emergency uh telephone surcharges or taxes. So when you look on your cell phone bill and you see uh that portion, you know, that says uh local, local tax or local emergency uh communications tax, that's what Lake County levies um to provide dispatch services. So uh last, or in twenty-twenty-two, um the board entered into an intergovernmental agreement, an IGA with the city of Leadville and Saint Vincent Hospital District to create the E nine-one-one authority, um which is part of statutory power the board has. So the E nine-one-one authority board is made up of the key uh players who rely on their job uh for dispatch, right? So the sheriff sits on the board, the chief of police, the fire chief, um the Saint Vincent District uh EMS director sits on it. And then Claire Hathaway, our Office of Emergency Management, sits on it. So there's a five-person board. That board oversees dispatch, so that was taken away from an elected office, from the sheriff's office, so now that board um uh oversees dispatch. Those, the employees in dispatch are county employees. They're on called what what's called like a lease agreement, so they go through RHR. They're subject to our um employment policies, our benefits package, all of that kind of stuff, but they don't report to me. They report to the board, uh to that board. So um also on that board, what they do, they do is they look at a three-year rolling average of EMS calls, fire calls, PD calls, and SO, sheriff's office calls, and then they figure out what the annual payments will be made to the E nine-one-one authority. So the city uh pays into it, Saint Vincent Hospital District pays into it, and then the county pays into it. Along with this emergency telephone tax or surcharge pays for dispatch in Lake County.
Has that generally been working out okay between the city and the county, and everybody's good with how that's set up?
Yes, um that one, that one, I would say has worked rather well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And uh so I, in the IGA, we'll send you the IGA, um you know, the B O C C um has the ability to um to do some things within the IGA, uh based on the recommendation of the E nine-one-one authority. Um you know, the B O C C um has the ability to um to do some things within the IGA, uh based on the recommendation of the E nine one one authority board. So that's worked well this year, through um the E nine one one authority made a recommendation to change how the payments from each entity were made. Um and then, you know, really having those those five folks whose jobs require dispatch, being in charge of dispatch has uh has also worked out really well. Um you know, there has been some staff turnover. It is an extremely uh challenging job, an emotionally taxing job to be a dispatcher. So we've, um that board has worked really hard and worked closely with with me on that, on like retention strategies, um and how we can attract new folks to wanna be part of that. Um and I think you went on the tour with the sheriff, um and you too will as well, um but you'll see where dispatch is. They don't need a whole lot of space, but the space they're in, um is not the best space.
It's wild, isn't it?
Yes, yes, it is. Um.
Which will have to be part of the renovation.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
With them.
Yeah.
Not in a closet.
Not in a closet.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um fire safety, so the board may adopt fire safety standards by ordinance. Um this is also, can also be done as part of the building code uh adoption. Improvement districts, so you could create local improvement districts or public improvement districts. Um this community has uh gone with an urban renewal authority, uh which is funded by tax increment financing. Um correct me where I'm at, but so for tax increment financing, when uh when a developer develops something, so the rail yard. The rail yard is the beneficiary of this. So when they build, when they build something new, right, that comes on the tax roll. So you take an increment of that financing to fund the U R A.
That's U R A.
Urban Renewal Authority.
Okay.
Um or otherwise known as the LURA, Leadville Urban Renewal Authority. So that increment financing comes from the county, the school district, the hospital district, and the city. Because they all would receive benefit, right, from that property taxing area or that new construction, right? So when something um since, since our property district areas all cover rail yards. They pay a city property tax, county property tax, the school district property tax, and a hospital property tax. So then we take an increment of that, what that new amount, new tax roll amount would be, to pay towards the urban renewal authority. The goal, underlying goal of the urban renewal authority is to create new commercial, commercial development at the rail yards as part of the master plan. Like that whole front area, you know, that's empty, that is all, that's intended to be commercial development for new businesses or existing businesses in town if they wanna go there. So fits and starts on that. Um I will say, um I'm I'm happy for him, I don't know that I should be or not. But Adam Ducharme, our Tourism and Economic Development Director, was recently elected the president of the Urban Renewal Authority. So I think with his passion and drive, um a lot of things over the past, was it created five, six years ago?
At least.
At least, yeah. Um I think a lot of things will be able to be cleaned up, um professionalized, and then hopefully like march forward on meeting the goals of the U R A. Uh and part of that, and you'll, you'll learn a little bit about it from Mark Wadsworth, our assessor. That is a big part, or part of his job, when we look at those assessments rates and the calculation of the TIF or the tax increment financing. Um he has spent an enormous amount of time fixing that. Um and it's not, not been an easy uh, an easy feat. But um all things are trending in a better direction with that.
Same developer, John?
Yep.
Okay.
That, that might not be, but um the, I think the the Urban Renewal Authority.
So he doesn't control those things, it goes, go into a separate account?
Um they go straight to him, right?
Managed by Laura, they go to him.
They go straight to him.
Oh, that's an, one of the.
And it's.
Well, when he starts paying back, then it goes to Laura.
If we get there.
Right.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
What I'm saying, that's the, that's how it's set up, is to eventually, the money goes to Laura.
Yeah. Yeah.
After he's done all of his, create, after he's actually created his development.
Yeah, so I I think it's about, it might be about like sixty K a year now. So about eighteen, twenty of that goes to the U R A, and then forty K is a check to high country developers or whatever his company's called. Yeah.
Or the Zellhaus.
Uh.
Uh yeah, it's supposed to be.
It's a thirty year, it's a long.
It's a long period of time, because it was, because of the phasing of the, the rail yards project too.
Long term, yeah. Yeah.
And that's why, you know, they annexed that part into the city, that's why it's the Leadville Urban Renewal Authority, not Lead County Urban Renewal Authority. And so part of what they didn't understand was that TIF is only calculated on that development. It's not calculated on all development throughout the county. So they, I think they thought it was gonna be a lot more lucrative, at least than what John did, um than it actually is.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, and it's based on the entire LURA.
Uh-huh.
Not the whole county, but where they drew the district.
Right, yeah, the district, yeah.
Yeah.
And they didn't just draw the district as the annex, they drew the district as the entire, like the entire city, plus the annex.
City. But then there's so many that, what, outside of the annex, the rail yard section, there's very little that feeds into the LURA that's in the rest of the city.
Right.
Is that all contractually bound? There's no word or amendment?
I mean, it's.
Well, he's not made yet, we're expecting him to pay, but like you have to. You have, they haven't gotten the money yet, LURA has not received. Actually, they did last year, right? Last year was the first year that they actually started receiving money.
Was the first year they, yeah.
So, so sorry, I'm I'm get, I'm trying to get caught up on this.
Well.
No part of this is easy, yeah, just.
It sounds, okay.
Yeah.
But he's paying Laura or the county and city are paying him?
Laura's paying him. Yeah.
This sounds backwards to me, but okay, I will try to.
Yeah.
It's part of the.
You bet, the point.
I would love to sit down and and talk more in depth.
The point is that you're trying to incentivize a developer actually developing an area that wouldn't otherwise be.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Right, so then, I mean, it's about whoever the LURA is, whatever U R A, helps create the infrastructure to make sure that that development can happen. And then you get, so like the county is, or the, whatever the U R A is incentivized to get that development to happen. Okay, that's as far as I understand for sure. And then you get this tax increment financing, TIF, which literally nobody is like a master on. The U R A has hired so many different people to actually understand what tax increment fining, financing is in context of the U R A. And everybody has a different answer. But the goal is that you're trying, you're trying to partner with a private developer to increase the value of land so that your property taxes can rise.
So he's getting tax breaks.
I see, trying to work. Yeah.
Essentially, but it's him specifically, not the homeowners who he's making money.
Correct.
Correct.
He gets kickbacks on the property value he increases.
Correct.
And that's supposed to help him?
Okay.
That's interesting what it is.
See where.
Investing in the civil, yes.
Okay, so we're not giving an infrastructure and tax kickbacks in there, okay, okay. Could we help him with any infrastructures that you know?
Not that I'm aware of, but it it um, I mean, right, so this involved sanitation district, Parkville Water.
Yeah.
City, county, hospital, splitter, so it um.
And they all signed off on, on the tax and the financing.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
So then the goal is that you, the assessor sets how much value was it within the U R A, wherever it is. They say this is what it started as. And then the assessor is, it's important that the assessor actually understands this, so that they can see how much value has been added to the U R A. And that's where the, that's where you can understand like the increment has happened. So if the assessor actually understands what they're doing, they can say, hey, in twenty eighteen when you started, or before you started, the value of the land was this within the U R A. Because of your development, it has increased this much. And we get some of that, the U R A gets some of that, and the developer gets some of that. But what, one of the problems has been, and y'all correct, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the assessor did not understand how to value everything within the U R A to begin with, to be able to keep track of how things have changed with the development. Which is what our current assessor really has their shit together, when it comes to that.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, the former assessor, from what I understand, fought very hard against the U R A, and then I think once it was adopted, just.
And ignored it.
Um so left a big pile of poo for Mark to shovel through, which he has, had done a very good job of. Um but yeah, it's not easy. It's extremely complicated and it is a very sophisticated financing model. Not saying that Leadville and Lake County can't be sophisticated, but um might have been a little much uh for us if um, when that happened. But um I think there's, I think between with Adam in the leadership position as the chair, Mark fixing a lot of things and kind of a renewed interest and focus on this, that um U R A could get where it needs to be, or the reevaluation of the IGA.
And we'll be able to take what we learned from this and apply it to any new developments moving forward, I guess as well, if we can look for some positives there.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. That's right, yes. Uh the board uh may also uh set a minimum wage for the unincorporated areas uh in the county that's higher than the state minimum wage. Uh state minimum wage is fourteen eighty-one an hour and for non-tipped employees and eleven seventy-nine an hour for tipped employees. Um so you guys have that ability to do it, I think most, I imagine most people pay more than that in our community, I could be wrong. Um but um kind of have to, to be able to get anybody to work for you. Um for mobile and manufactured home parks, um you can adopt, administer, and enforce ordinances and resolutions to provide for the safe and equitable operation of mobile home parks throughout the unincorporated areas of the county. Um we have several of those in our community. Um we've worked uh very closely with uh management of um Mountain View Village and Lake Fork um Village. On uh for Mountain View Village, uh working on um upgrading their water and sanitary infrastructure.
Um Village East Fork is now Mountain View?
Would you say that?
Which Village East Fork used to be called, that's now, we got three, right?
There's Mountain View East.
Mountain View East.
Mountain View West.
Mountain View West, I know.
And then Lake Fork. Hey, look, look at them now.
Lake Fork's, Lake Fork's.
It's through.
Here's Lake Fork here.
Lake Fork's south.
Not that far down.
No, not the fork, it's up.
Oh, excuse me, up here, here's Lake Fork.
Yeah, yeah.
And then over here, you go out towards Skid Cooper, there's Mountain View East, Mountain View West.
Gotcha.
Mountain View East, east and west is the Tennessee Flats.
And then we have one.
That's used to be Village East Fork, I don't know what it's called now.
Over here.
That's uh Mountain Valley.
Mountain, Mountain Valley Estates.
Mountain Valley Estates. Valley Estates, okay.
They're free.
Again, I forgot that the one down uh on the way to Cooper is split into two.
Yeah, so we have um.
Thank you.
Good working relationships with Lake Fork and Mountain View. Um Mountain Valley, um can be a challenge sometimes, actually a lot of times. Um cause there uh, the the challenging thing that will happen is so a a mobile, mobile home park, manufactured community park is actually private property. The park owner, um whether it's a corporation, metropolitan district, whatever, that is their property. So if there is uh an infrastructure issue that happens, right, it's not the purview of the county. Um so the, the sanitation spell up on Chicken Hill, that is within the purview of the county, cause it could create a public health issue. We can argue that with manufactured home parks too, if there's a sanitation issue, right? But for a lot of times when people are seeking recourse um through the county, um there's not a whole lot we can do, um which is frustrating. But we do, you know, provide folks with uh state resources um and abilities to hold the park owners accountable. Um you know, I know our human services team, community planning and development team, you know, pass along those contacts and also like refer things to our state partners, cause it can be a state issue as well. Um but you guys do have the ability to um set some rules and regulations for the parks locally.
There are like state laws around how frequently uh a la- a landlord within a mobile home community can raise a rent, for example.
Oh, that's my next question, thank you.
Um, yes, those are relatively new. Those are regulated by C D P G, the Department of Public Health and Environment. It's a complaint-based process though. Um as you might imagine, there's uh intimidation or some fear.
Yeah.
But oftentimes, those types of complaints don't happen, let alone does the state have the capability to come and investigate, so um.
Is there any kind of advocacy in place to help lodge complaints for people who might otherwise be less inclined to do so?
Yeah, there's definitely uh housing advocates. Our community justice program that uh is within uh the county brought in a bunch of housing advocates to educate people. So giving them free legal advice. But uh again, it's just a power dynamic that a lot of people don't wanna say anything. But I have heard many stories of uh people having their rent raised multiple times in a year, and the state statute says one time max per year.
Is there one of them looking at expansion, or any of them looking at expansion?
Lake Fork, uh the one down south, um is looking at that, so they've worked with community planning and development on that for adding new units, um yeah.
Uh-huh. So Lake Fork is the one down by Saturdays?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Aren't they not on county san- or uh, since, cause they're on their own septic system? They have, they have an open, s- an open cesspool, there is no, no building came.
Yeah, and um, I don't know what each one has, I think um.
I think you're right.
Um but yes, they they have their own water and their own sanitary systems, so they're not part of the sanitation district or Parkville Water.
Okay, and so they're looking at expansion, cause that'd be good, uh I imagine it's good low-income housing.
Yeah.
So are they.
It's definitely expensive.
It is?
I mean, I, yeah, I have friends who pay way more than I pay in my mortgage.
For a trailer?
A thousand dollars a room.
A thousand dollars a room for a trailer?
What?
I've rented a thousand dollars a room.
Yeah, yes.
We also have issues of multiple families, like three or four families living in a single trailer.
Mm-hmm.
Just so you know, the more like food stamps, et cetera, are all by how many people are in a household, like they're not eligible for public benefit. So it's just, it's a big issue. And also not typically energy efficient, so the cost of heating and especially in a room there is pretty absurd.
Yeah.
Mm.
And the site rental, what's the average? Around, we.
It's around, yeah, where it is.
But then.
Ma- Mountain View Estates, last I asked, was twelve hundred dollars.
Yes, I'm not.
Yes.
Just for the, just for the spot.
Sounds like it's prohibitive of uh being able to move on from that, because it's hard to save money, is that right?
Yeah.
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 But that means that the landowner is raking in some cash and could certainly do his own septic system upgrades.
We would hope, one of the issues we've run into with some of the ore parks too, is where they've changed ownership and you've got, they jack up the rent and people wanna leave, but then there are laws that prohibit you from moving certain aged units. They're a little more conservative, so you have families who may have to walk away from their home
Their house.
and abandon it to that, in in the landowner just turns around and rents it out to somebody else.
Yeah.
It's a good business plan, are those uh probably big corporate, suddenly traded companies?
Mostly, yeah, yeah. We've got a couple of smaller ones that might be individually, that may have like six, twelve or something units in an area or something, not as large as our major ones. Privately owned, but those are more.
Are they subject to our building codes as well, or are they exempted with?
It's state requirements.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um you know, for that, uh so which can make it a challenge, right? If we, you know, come in for like a mechanical permit or something, uh and.
But we may adopt ordinances to change some of that.
Yes, yeah.
As long as it's not conflicting with what the state requirements are, which we'll talk about.
Yeah.
Yeah. And there's, you know, there is a model, um the one, uh the the community on uh East Health, East Twelfth, the Cooperative Noeva. So all those folks in those manufactured homes purchase the park as a group from the former owner. So now they all own it. Um but you know, they, you have to have a decent owner who wants to sell to that instead of the next, the next person.
It's tough to talk someone out of.
Tough to talk someone out of a situation like that, a third.
Just a giant cash mobile.
Cash cow, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and Bag was a huge, a huge player in them being able to purchase that, that park. So Bag with their housing, they have so much had housing advocacy, they advocate to the state and they work with local um mobile park owners. They're really tied in to this issue.
Well, it sounds like an issue, that's for sure.
Is there any land available or opportunity for a co-op for manufactured housing somewhere in the county or?
Uh for the parcels that the county owns, um I would say maybe, um there's definitely like a possibility for that. Um we actually did a um in policy work on uh, you know, like for habitat for a community. That the best place identified for that is kind of done by Dutch Henry, um by Leadville Sand and the Tubing Hill and stuff. There's a kind of a strip that both C M C and the county kind of like are adjacent landowners. So that would would have been like the best one for habitat for humanity for folks to build there. Um but you know, I think, you know, if, you know, the county um remediated the Monroe site where the Justice Center was gonna go.
Mm-hmm.
Um you know, that's close to Electric Water Sewer, uh.
But that's in the city, isn't it?
Yeah, still our property, it's board's property.
Maybe subject to architectural guidelines.
True, very true.
That doesn't work with manufactured housing.
Yeah, um you know, other.
But we could work with the city to try to get a, to try to get rezoned. That's very much an option.
Yeah.
Yeah, more like a trailer park, more of like a tiny home community or something where people can get out of those trailers and buy their first little house or something.
Mm-hmm.
The three hundred acres up by the airport, that's, that's a lot of things.
Yes.
That's.
Yes.
That's the first thing that came to mind.
Yeah.
We'd have to get sanitation up there, but.
You also have to look at the F A A has certain radiuses for noise and stuff like that around um airports, so we have to look, we have four that.
But there is um opportunity with property that the county does own. And we'll um, we'll show you here when we, when we break at lunch, I'll show you the the map if you haven't seen it, and then you can see the parcels that our county owned, you can filter by that, so you guys can think about that.
And you might be ask, ask Ann when the C P D presents, I think when Lake Fork is thinking about expanding, C P D imposes some type of like public improvement requirement, so the owner of that property was required to meet with the uh quote home community to see what they wanted, I think a lot of them wanted like a playground there.
Mm-hmm.
So C P D and by virtue of you all through C P D's ability to like ask these landowners to invest back into the community for if they wanna expand.
The railroad tracks aren't sufficient playground?
So here are other things that you may regulate or license, um.
Dance halls, oh amazing.
Yes.
And escort services.
Unity.
Yes.
Lot of, lot of sin you guys can regulate and tax, um. Uh so, so a couple.
This is so much, why are we not doing this?
Yes. So we, we just did a cigarettes, nicotine and tobacco products, um ordinance, um regulatory ordinance there. Um dogs and pet animals, we can talk about that, and we talked about the animal shelter. Uh liquor, marijuana, um both medical and short-term, or short-term, uh retail, short-term rentals. Um you know, we've, we've done that, uh trash haulers, I think we have like a little bit on the books, but not a whole lot. Um but you know, for all the other things, um you know, I don't uh. You know.
Yeah, and keep in mind, so this is within your jurisdiction, so we'll talk about later too, so a lot of these potential businesses would fall within the city.
Mm-hmm.
Be subject to their jurisdiction instead.
Um how, how many communities across the state actually have uh licensing? Like I remember living in other areas decades ago where it was like, I think you had to get a license to get a dog. You know, like a pet license, but like.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, there is one here.
Here it doesn't seem like there, is that just Colorado kind of in general or?
There is a license requirement for dogs.
There is?
Yes, in both the city and the county, yes, there's, those to all be licensed, cats are optional.
Good luck.
Yeah, yeah, but um yeah, dogs, dogs are required to have license and rabies.
Hmm.
For the city and the county.
Would those fees go towards the uh upkeep and maintenance of the, like an animal shelter?
It's supposed to be your money for that.
Is there a reason that I would say the community at large is fairly unaware that that is?
Typically, it's driven, we don't really have the resources for enforcement to go out and check all the pens and places across the county yards with dogs in them to see if they've got their license. So typically, it's driven by um violations such as dogs at large that then are picked up and brought to the shelter and you find out that they don't have their rabies or they don't have their license and stuff like that, and that ends up being part of the process of them being returned to the owners as they have to, it should prove of rabies and registration essentially, so.
It's also a communication issue.
Yeah.
Like who said, like through what channels are we using to convey this new licensure, I didn't know about it either until just like five months ago.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But like nobody's saying anything on Facebook, nobody's saying on, in an Instagram, nobody's like.
How much is a lot?
Talking about it.
It depends on whether your, your dog is altered or unaltered, but um it's a different.
What was that?
Higher fee if you're unaltered.
What, what, what's that mean, al- altered?
New to the state.
Oh, altered, or I thought you said authored.
Yes, altered.
There's a book, a great book about my dog.
So it, it, it depends on that stuff.
Probably twenty bucks or something.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't have any restrictions currently on like certain breeds, right?
Um technically, the county's animal control ordinance does still have a provision regarding, there, there has been an ordinance regarding pit bulls um that hasn't been rescinded yet. And I'll, I'll be honest with you, the discussion around the animal shelter and stuff has led us to look at a lot of our existing ordinances and stuff. And I've talked with Heath about the need to update our animal control ordinance, cause that's pretty much enforced through the sheriff's office. Animal control is a part of the sheriff's office, and so our ordinance needs to be updated depending on what happens with the city. Um and then through their ordinance, their code might need to be updated as well.
Denver had one for years and they rescinded it.
Yeah, ours is on the books, it's, I don't think it's ever been enforced. Um and I know for a long time it used to be, if you went into the shelter, the vast majority of dogs in the shelter were rabies.
Mm-hmm. So the ones that we currently do regulate are cigarettes.
Mm-hmm.
Liquor and marijuana and trash.
Yes, and short-term rentals.
And S T Rs.
Yeah.
Are there any more medical, are any more marijuana licenses available or grows?
No, we have, no, and and interestingly enough, like with the, the, they grow facilities and stuff like that, that was especially tailored to our current existing grow facility, it's capped at that one, and when they go away, there's not a provision for any more of the current outbreak.
I don't think that industry is expanding at all.
Which ones?
Some Earl.
Earls up, up on the, this one down here by uh.
Roots.
Figure R.
Is in the city.
And it's.
St. James.
So yeah, still good. Did it live down there?
Yeah.
Yeah, most of the cities.
Across the street, I was like, I don't mean I could live here.
They need to upgrade their can filters more often maybe, I think that's complaint-based as well. But that whole industry is kind of taking a big nose on it, so yeah.
The name's back down, yeah.
I don't think we're gonna see that.
Okay, cause everyone's growing themselves?
Yeah, I think.
A lot of our neighboring states have now legalized it, so there isn't as much drive of folks coming across the border as somebody in Colorado anymore.
No novelty, saturated.
The market is.
Saturation.
The market is like balancing.
Yeah.
But so if we don't have a regulation on this, does that mean that it can exist? Or do we have to have regulation to be able to license it? I'm thinking like a dance hall, number one, that seems really antiquated, I don't know what a dance hall would be considered, but if we don't have a license for that, does that mean we can't have a dance, a dance hall?
Well, and it's, you'd have to develop the licensing procedure per the code, says that this is part of the thing. And sometimes there are different levels, like a lot of these things are also regulated at the state.
Mm-hmm.
You have to have a state license for it, but there are provisions in those code that allow the local governments to have a licensing scheme as well. And that's usually when it's come up. Most of these would be driven by somebody coming in and saying, hey, I wanna open a dance hall type of thing, and we have to look, it's kind of like we went through with the um with marijuana, you know, licensing and stuff, as well as with the, the tobacco license.
Mm-hmm.
We'd have to create a structure for that licensing if it doesn't exist already.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's an interest from uh public health, so public health does um licensing for tobacco for both the city and the county.
Hmm.
Um we take those fees and it basically funds an F T E part, an F T E to go and do like site checks, et cetera, to make sure they're following the ordinance. Um there's an interest from public health to do that with marijuana, so that the city and the county are better aligned and just having public health do the site inspections.
Mm-hmm.
From what I know, I don't think the city actually does a site inspection, they just say, show up each year and give us funding, your money. Um something that's not on here that I think you're probably interested in is also psilocylin.
Yeah.
Is that legislation, well, I guess it was to the, so.
Just recently, yeah.
Was just, yeah, wasn't it just Denver though?
No, so there is, it's state law, yeah.
Oh, it was all county? Oh, okay.
So that's something that's on our radar now to start looking at whether we want to be proactive. Cause it's probably just a matter of time before somebody will want to do that.
Mm-hmm. So can we, I'm sorry, can I use an example, some massage establishments, we've got people who provide massage in town, or whatever, in the county. Do, but we don't regulate it, so it's allowed?
But again, that, it, yeah, it, it, this is what you can, you have the authority to, it doesn't necessarily mean, especially if there's a state level regulation. Doesn't mean that you have to, but one thing keep in mind, this is that sometimes there's the opportunity for additional revenue from that licensing, whatever.
Mm-hmm.
At least to cover the costs, especially public health and that type of thing.
Okay, but then.
But it's not, but also our, the massage establishments, we've talked about the ones that are on, you know, within the city, they would be regulated by the city right now.
Right, I get that, but let's say um escort services, like escort services aren't allowed in Colorado. So why would that even be on the list of things that we could regulate?
It depends on how you define escort, they're, you know, non, non-sex based, sex trafficking type of escort services are allowed in some, in some states.
Right. In the state.
Like, yeah.
Like, but you, but you can license escort services in the state.
In, in local, Gilbert County.
So you like Gilbert County or Black Hawk and Central City are?
Uh-huh. They have escort services?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, cool.
And the, yeah.
Oh.
So if someone, they're allergic to come with a psilocybin proposal and they wanted to stop it, I would, I think. I don't think that's appropriate, you could go to Denver if you really wanted to get some shrooms or whatever, but so someone comes with a proposal and they say, oh, hold on a second, put a moratorium on it and develop policy, what you're saying, Chris is maybe sooner than later, we develop the policy that restricts it. And I don't think the kids are really getting old players. They got all the marijuana they need, the high school's full of it, oh, oh.
Well, you know, and then I'm thinking more of like someone's gonna come to the table with a production facility, they're gonna wanna set up a warehouse and have shelves and rows of.
Like a grow facility.
Yeah, and you know, are we gonna balance losing revenue for a moral stance? Or is the black market just gonna fill the need that, you know, we, we're trying to keep away from kids and stuff, you know? So that'd be a, that'd be an interesting discussion to have, I'd like to dive into that sometime, cause yeah, if it's on, if it's coming, we better sort of talk about it.
Well, that's why, yeah, we're already in contact with, with public health and with C P D, because it's also a land use issue in terms of, you know, to have those type of facilities, so we're already talking about it internally in hopes of, we'll put our heads together and then come to you with, this is what we would propose for being proactive on this issue.
It's a work session.
Yeah.
So it's, it's been decriminalized, it's not legal, it's decriminal, there's no penalties, is that right?
You can.
And it, it, you, if you.
Grow it.
For personal consumption, and it's kind of like with marijuana too, you can have a certain amount for your personal consumptions.
Right.
But you cannot do it with the intent to distribute it, to sell it.
Oh, okay.
So that's this, that's a little precipice that get, you know, with the, the.
You can give it to other, I'll have to recreate.
As long as you don't sell it, you can't sell it.
I mean, it's, it's such a gray area, I think people are, are selling them online and stuff, you know, it's.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Can you put it in a tea and share it with your dinner guests? Cause that's, heads on, heads on, that kind of.
Okay, beautiful.
Dinner you're trying to have, I guess.
Um so one thing, you know, I think you guys will notice through this is just um, there's a lot of thing on our books. They're Google dance halls, which is a large public hall, a building where people pay to enter and dance.
Which we do.
Right, yeah, um so.
Like free, like vlogs?
Yeah. Yeah.
Like all of it.
So you'll, you'll see things in statute that are, yes, antiquated. Um former Sheriff Reyes was the first woman sheriff in the state of Colorado, if you read the uh sheriff's statute. Uh his citations, it is all he him, right, it's all his.
Mm-hmm.
Uh when I worked for the state, um we worked hard to take the R word out of the books for Medicaid um and human services clients, retard, so taking that word out. So there's, you're gonna see things in statute where you're like, why is this here? It's like, well, what's the importance of removing dance halls from? Um.
Again, that's usually driven by somebody coming for something that somebody doesn't like, or be like, oh, I didn't know that, and then they take action.
That.
Mm-hmm.
Right. Yeah. And then also, I mean, new things, right? Right?
Yeah.
Things are legalized, you guys figure out your own rules, there you go, great, okay. And that's, you know, part of the impetus for the, the nicotine ordinance that we, we did was driven by just knowing that youth in our community, um.
Was it seventy percent, what was the stat?
Forget it.
Yeah, but like, it was very easy for under eighteen, I'm eighteen or twenty-one.
Eighteen, eighteen.
Eighteen, very easy for under eighteen-year-olds in our community to go and get vapes, cigarettes, zins, whatever, very easy. So that was part of the impetus of this, learning from the school district on how bad it was in, in classrooms and things like that. Doing a little bit of a study on really seeing it, and then now having this enforcement mechanism where the fines are, I think they started two hundred bucks, but they get up to a thousand dollars real quick and the threat of taking your nicotine license away, which a lot of nicotine retailers, like gas stations.
Mm-hmm.
They don't make money off of gas, they make money off of tobacco.
Yeah.
Um and beer and things like that, so that's our stick with them.
There was no, they just weren't checking in.
Yeah, yeah, so now there's, there's an actual enforcement mechanism.
Sting operations.
Yep, yep, yeah, and, and we will, we will do those.
Yeah.
Uh and we did work with all of the nicotine retailers in the community. They were all in favor of this, none of them opposed this, and they all understood the, the consequences, um should their staff not follow through.
The uh, so in the way that we are allowed to increase penalties for tobacco, there, there's nothing similar that we could do with uh increasing penalties on littering? That I don't see that mentioned, like any kind of.
You already have like those type of laws on the books essentially, that for like nuisance, white, you know, refuge, failure, and that, that runs through land use, so C P D would be one, so code violation, so you have, you know, land use and building codes that pertain to some of those issues too, so land use, like somebody can't just chuck their own private dump. You know, where they just continue to communicate waste on, that's a violation of land use, so.
What about littering on the highway, is that the state law?
Yes.
There's not much education on that, I mean, here's a ton of litter.
Drives me nuts.
You know, there's something that um.
Some big communities have to sign, there's a thousand dollar fine for littering, maybe.
Every sprint, seeing the twisted teeth. Yeah.
That's crazy.
All, all year, all year long.
So.
You, 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 yeah, there's always like.
They're, they're so disgusting that they don't even wanna be reminded they're drinking them, so they throw all their trash right out as soon as they're done.
Yeah.
Well, it's a culture thing in Mexico, I mean, it doesn't bother them at all. Not to call them out, but if we did have a sign, thousand dollar fine for littering, could we put that in Spanish as well?
Um we can, but um the uh, the challenge is, is that. Um, we can, but um, the uh, the challenge is, is that any, this is C dot Colorado Department of Transportation, and then a big D O T, Federal Department of Transportation, all traffic signs. Anything that goes on a like U S or state highway has to be in English. It cannot be in English and Spanish, it has to be in English. Um, so it can't be in both languages. Now, can there be an education campaign done, um, explaining those things, sure? Could we put up a sign in Spanish, like take a while for the state to figure out and shake their finger at us and we take it down, sure.
I think traditionally, the the problem we've run into is that the crimes can be reported, they aren't enforced.
嗯。
I think, I was told that one case in the last, I don't know how many years, actually got the fine. And this was like trash bags on the side of the road, full trash bags, dug through, fined, identifying documents.
Yep.
Take that to the, to law enforcement, and then by the time it hits the judge, it's kind of a nothing burger.
Right.
So, I don't know how we could encourage stricter enforcement of littering, maybe that would start, you know, and maybe a a a campaign to educate, like, hey, we're gonna start really bringing, throwing the bucket, people who are dropping their trash in our forests, you know, and um, that whole subject came up, like when we were discussing the fees at the landfill and where that delicate balance of you raise the fees, you're gonna see a bunch more trash in the woods.
嗯。
Um, so
And that's, you know, part of, you know, so for the vault toilets out at the junction parking lot on Cevero ninety-nine, for down at Hayden Meadows, like I wonder why they can't just leave their trash just like in the bathroom, but they put it in the vault.
Ooh, nice.
Yes, so that's a, that's a big extra fee, you know, that we pay for every time, so there is a probably a, like a work session discussion on just trash in the community, you know, we partner with Cloud City Conservation Center every year on on the county cleanup. Maybe it's more than once a year, you know, in the spring and in the fall, uh, other educational ways to get people to understand it, like it's, it's very annoying at the drop sites for recycling and for trash, like or if you don't use the yellow bag, alright, fine, whatever, but at least you put it in the right container, but when you put your trash in with the aluminum cans, staff's not gonna dig out your trash and do that, it's gonna go in the landfill, um, 'cause there's a health and safety risk to to staff for digging through them, so worth a further conversation.
Yeah, definitely.
Shrooms and trash, got it.
And escort services.
And escort services.
Business idea.
Yeah.
To renew.
I have friends who like put themselves in college on escort services.
Really? Are you cold?
Oh.
Get freezing.
Are you sure you're wearing a t-shirt on this one?
Um, look up there, see if, so behind you there, Matt, on the top there, there is some magnetic covers over the the heat radiator heat thing, I don't know if that's even on.
It is on.
Is you can, if you're cold, you can take those off.
Is anybody else cold or fresh?
My feet are cold, it's about a twenty degree difference between my feet and my shoulders.
It's, it's chilling here right now. I'm just saying, I've got
Yeah.
Lot, lots of the layers.
I just need my, snow boots, I guess.
So continuing with our May, so as we talk about government governance and policy engagement. Um, so adopt land use and zoning regulations, uh, you guys are starting um at the beginning of a comprehensive plan update, so Anne Schneider, Community Planning and Development, will talk a lot more about that. Maybe you've heard things about the One Community Project, so we're doing a joint update with the city of Leadville for the comprehensive plan. So comprehensive plan is land use and zoning, this is our zoning map, um, that was just updated. Um, but the comprehensive plan is is larger than that as well, right, it provides a strategic guidance, guardrails, a decade long, they're usually about a decade, maybe fifteen years. Uh, plan for economic development, um, tourism management. Um, it, uh, landfill expansion, it's, it's a lot of things all rolled into the comprehensive plan. Um, so we're doing that in partnership with the city, right now, uh, we're in the process of going through like the the visioning um, and vision and values process, so working with the community to get, to gather their vision and values. So really, so this year, you guys have the opportunity to hear from the community in lots of different ways on this um comprehensive plan update. So we've, we've started over probably like the past four or five months, laying the fram- framework, gathering partners, doing that. And then we're just gonna continue hammering it out, focused town halls, focused um meetings with business groups, even breaking out the business groups to restaurant owners versus construction companies versus um, or else, you know, all the other things we have in town. Um, where even, you know, we're doing it intentionally with staff, going department by department, setting up time to meet with Community Planning and Development, so we try and get as much information as possible. We're joined in the comprehensive plan um update process with a nonprofit called Community Builders, they're based out of Glenwood Springs. Two, they're very, very good at this, um, and bringing disparate parts of the community together to get feedback and to tie into what this comprehensive and strategic plan will look like. Two, the two most recent ones they did was the Gunnison Valley Partnership Project, so the entire Gunnison Valley, uh, all the cit- all the municipalities, the school districts, the county, host of nonprofits, what it looked like for the Gunnison Valley to move forward. And then, um, the, the other one is uh the town of Silverton, um, so Silverton um might be a little more crazy than us. So they worked, they worked really closely with all seven hundred people there, um, on developing um kind of a, a community plan. Talking about housing, infrastructure, what they want Silverton to look like in the short term and the long term. And out of that, the community actually decided to create a housing authority, um, 'cause the community realized that, you know, folks couldn't live there anymore. And there's, there's a specific reason you wanna live in Silverton, and same with Leadville, um, so, you know, they're cool places, but so so Community Builders has a great track record of bringing communities together and having um good and challenging conversations, and then creating a really good product. Um, so buckle up for that, um, but during that process, um, so you have land use and zoning regulations. So, you know, land use is really, you know, what is the highest and best use, you know, that uh land can be used for. What does our, you know, subdivision planned unit development process look like? And then zoning regulations, so all these, you know, things you see here. Uh, you know, the biggest overhaul that was done was in twenty twenty-two, was finalization of a decade-long project of the creation of the backcountry zoning. So that was a pretty robust um process throughout a decade, um, and then like the last six months, which happened to be my first six months as manager, was just it will hold, like meetings after meetings after meetings with concerned property owners, community members, all of that, um, but in my view, really well done by Anne, process and public engagement. So that was the creation of uh backcountry zoning. Um, and then, you know, so the board has the ability to do those, you also have the planning commission, which you guys appoint, which is kind of your advisory board on land use and zoning, um, and then uh land use applications that come through, you know, they look at the code and say, okay, you know, Chris wants to build seven hundred units, uh, here are your conditions of approval. So then they pass that along to the board, and you guys are the ultimate judges on that, but
On the subject of that backcountry, so with that, as well as other um zones, are there like variances available? Like if somebody has a real common sense um problem with something, like hypothetically, you've got like a legacy property that's been there forever in the backcountry zone. And currently, they've gotta store all their property maintenance, vehicles, plow truck, whatever, in like rhino shelters that look like garbage that are falling over. And they want a garage, but they, how, how would they try and do that, is that something like, there is an option there, or is it just like, nope, you're not allowed to do that here?
There's always, uh, so correct me, there's always a path to a variance, and that happens through the Board of Adjustment. Um, so if somebody wants to do something, just say against code, right?
嗯哼。
Um, they have the ability to go to either start with Community Planning and Development, and there's a little discretion there with our, with your department directors there. Um, don't like that, right, then we can go, then folks can go to the Board of Adjustment. Um, and the same thing, you just brought up Commissioner, like, hey, here I am, I'm in this new zoning, I just, I want this structure. You know, I'll make it woodsy, I'll make it fit in, all of that, but it's, it's for this, I still have the original use of my property, you know, and then the Board of Adjustment um can weigh in on that. If they don't like what the Board of Adjustment said, then they can go to the planning commission, and if they don't like what the planning commission says, then they go to the board. Yeah, so there's lots of, yes, yes, yeah.
Multiple, yeah, OK. Just curious how that process worked, 'cause I knew at some stage it would result in some, I wasn't
Yeah. Yeah.
I remember hearing some of that at the C C I event, but that was, uh, my bucket was overflowing, I think, when they got to that subject.
Yes. Yes. Um, May, and, you know, maybe that one should be a shout, but collaborating with other governmental entities, so you know, the, the closest one is the, the city of Leadville, but you also have C M C, which is a, um, you know, a property taxing district across the state. Uh, uh, we have the school district, Parkville, uh, Parkville Water Sanitation District, Hospital District, those are all elected boards within our community. Um, and so we have good working relationships with all of them. Um, obviously, there's, you know, our regional partners, regional um governments, other counties, other cities, uh, other organizations. Um, and then of course, the state and federal governments. Um, so tying in to participate in uh state and federal advocacy, like we talked about, there's gonna be a lot of things that come down that are unfunded mandates, um, but one of the um most powerful voices at uh the state legislature is a county commissioner. Um, so when county commissioners go and testify on legislation and impacts to a local community, legislators listen to that more, more so than than other groups. You also have the ability to appoint advisory boards, so the rec advisory board, airport advisory board, um, planning commission, kind of technically that one's a statutory board, but it's an advisory board. Uh, if you guys wanna come up with another advisory board, it's within your purview.
It was proposed last night to come up with a race series advisory board, wasn't that a subject that they
Oh, excuse me, that's awesome.
That's interesting.
Well, um
I don't know if they meant in this capacity, but I know it's
I mean, we have a rec advisory board, people could participate in that.
Yeah.
嗯哼。
That would be like recreation.
Yeah. So, so yeah, if there's, you know, if there's uh in the area, you know, that um, there's, there's a lot of deference to, maybe, maybe it is a big issue in in the community. Um, housing, right, um, and, you know, you want uh, you know, an advisory board on that. Or you would rather have, you know, folks, um, local, regional, statewide folks come during work sessions, talking about pros and cons of housing developments they've worked on. Um, the subsidy costs, all those kind of things, right, so there's you know, if you guys uh seek that uh outside import, there's a way, like, kind of a way to do that, so like the rec advisory board, the airport advisory board, you know, they they have bylaws, you appoint them for a reason for that position, kind of laying out what you want from them, what advice you're looking for, um, so
And we'll talk about, once you do that, you have to be thoughtful about what advisory boards you want, 'cause once you put them in place, it's kind of hard to undo.
Yeah.
嗯。嗯。
Yes.
Who creates a special district, does that go to the voters?
Voters, mm-hmm.
And who can put a special district on the ballot?
You three.
Commissioners.
Yeah, yeah.
Cool.
The citizens can also petition to create that, but um you guys can refer to the citizens and say, you know
Right.
Now, we think a special district for whatever purpose, fire, recreation, library, um, expanding the hospital district would be of the benefit to our community.
Yeah. 嗯。Yeah.
Here's why, and then you made that pitch, and then you guys can do anything else, 'cause you're not allowed to run the campaign.
Yeah.
Is uh, is that kind of like a Swiss army knife, is there like just an incredible range of things you can create special districts for?
There is, um, but the big, the big thing is, is that it's another uh bite at the apple, drop and dip into the well, um, most proper, most special districts are also property taxing districts.
OK, it's usually based in some form of revenue or a change in
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. So they can, they can levy, you know, they could go to the voters for a sales tax, so when uh the city and the county created the Regional Housing Authority, they said they gave the ability, it still has to go to the voters, but the ability for the uh Regional Housing Authority to levy a mill up to five mills, and then, I think it's a quarter, maybe a half uh sales tax, that they could go uh to the voters and ask for a sales tax for that. But if you think of, you know, Fire Protection District, Public Safety District, Library District, uh Recreation District, um, those are all property taxing.
嗯。
They could also, you know, once they're created, they could go to the voters and ask for a sales tax as well.
嗯。
But, um, you know, let's say if, and we can take deeper dives on this, but you know, if, you know, if we look through the county's budget for you know, what we pay for fire services, one point eight million dollars basically passed through, you know, to the city to provide fire services to the county. Is it worthwhile asking the community to create a fire protection district? Um, looking at pros, parks, rec and open space and goals, budgets, is it worthwhile, you know, and then all of the county's assets for recreation, is it worthwhile? Um, uh, referring to the community to vote on a rec district, you know, then the county, you know, you would have to commit uh to lowering your mills, I would think, to get it to pass, but, you know, you can keep the mills up here, so here's a new property taxing district, or
嗯。
or it's kind of robbing Peter to pay Paul, right, we'll lower our mills, but they're gonna charge.
嗯。嗯。
So, um, but anyway, yes.
The monster finish.
Sorry, Lauren?
No, it, there's just, there's also a lot of laws around special districts that, you know, you're gonna have to have somebody administer it and have its own budget, so it does add a little bit of
Yeah.
bureaucracy, especially when some of those services are already being funded through the county
Yeah.
at a higher level, um, you just have to kind of think about, is it worth it, can you just create a more bureaucracy? First of all, community like ours.
Yeah.
We're going into the home stretch now, into the dance, do y'all need a quick break or something before we go into these ones, are you good, or whatever, are y'all getting set for fair?
Two hours. I'm good for now.
OK, and just say, I need a break.
I make that.
Alright, so now you've heard about all what you can do, these are all the things that you may not do.
I know what you're not allowed to do.
So, you, as commissioners, your jurisdiction lies solely within Lake County. You cannot pass any law, regulation, or it's anything that extends beyond the waters of Lake County. And so that's um Colorado Constitution and statute. Um, so counties in Colorado are considered subdivisions of the state. And so the powers of the, the county is exercised statutorily through the B O C C, are the only ones authorized to do that. There's certain powers you can delegate to others out of that, but you are essentially the buck, you can have one of those times, the buck stops here. Um, the other thing too, is that you can't override federal or state laws. So if there's something either the federal or state government does that you don't like, you can't pass a law that says, we're not gonna do this, we'll do this instead. And there's a misimpression among some folks that, well, we'll just become a whole rule county, or we'll make our own laws. Well, you still have to apply the state law, because that doesn't give you the ability to, to depart from those um requirements, so if you haven't read or been totally immersed in your other train so far, in, in Title thirty of the Colorado law statutes, I would recommend you take a read through there, you're not, you're not real on or anything like that, but it does lay out specifically what your authorities are.
嗯。
So, any questions on that?
And there's books.
Statue books.
Books, yeah, the code, you have a copy of the code right behind you, so you can always
All these law books here?
last Yes, Title thirty is, is the one for counties.
How, how does that apply when, um, I think you can create districts in conjunction with other counties, can't you, that go over
You, yeah, regional districts and stuff, those are statutory, and so if you do something like that, then, then those districts become their own entity, kind of what I'm
OK. OK.
Tim was talking about, but the county can't say, we're gonna create a district that encompasses Lake, J V, Eagle County But the county can't say, we're gonna create a district that encompasses Lake, J V, Eagle County type, you can't do that without those entities coming towards you.
Yeah. Partnership. And I don't, I'm not like jumping at the bit to the districts, I just wanna understand how it all works, or?
No. Yeah. Alright, um and again, you know, the unless federal or state law expressly says that it's reserving certain rights to the counties. You can't override, so you can't pass laws that are inconsistent with federal or state law, and if you do, they're void, they're non-enforceable. So obviously, you you have staff and stuff, that there's something you wanna do, your first step is say, hey, I think, I'm thinking about this. What would that require, what would it require to do a district for this, that, and the other? Come to staff and we'll put together information for you, and at the end of the day, it might be, sorry, you can't do that because of the, you know, prescriptions in federal or state law.
Hmm.
But you can certainly advocate for state law to be changed.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Um we talked about this a little bit earlier about Tabor, so um you can't create new taxes uh or debt without voter approval. And this is probably the most important constitutional provision, it's not just the state law, it is a constitutional provision that was adopted in nineteen ninety-two. Um to limit uh the amount of revenue that a a public entity can receive, retain, and spend. Um and the, I put in the language the actual constitutional thing, so that it it emphasizes the fact that that those provisions are self-executing. And and so they supersede any conflicting state laws, charters, local provisions, whatever. Um and that can only be changed by of the, you know, of the people, so that's why if you want to pass a new tax or increase. You know, a tax rate or something, go beyond your millbillies that you have in some way, you have to go to the public for a move on that. Now, the good news is, two thousand eleven, like county voters did pass um a waiver that allowed the county to essentially do what's called debrus. And that refers to Douglas Bruce, who was the principal architect of the Tabor Amendment that allows um the county to collect, retain, and expend all revenues and other funds from any source. So once you take it in, it's not like the state where each year you get that check back of your percentage of the excess revenues. It's like we get to actually retain the the taxes that were approved by our voters.
Hmm.
Um so the other thing is that, again, even though we debrus increases, just to keep that in mind, okay, if we're looking to increase our taxes, we're gonna have to go to the the people. The last bullet point here also talks about that Tabor prohibits a public entity from entering entering into multi-fiscal year obligations beyond the money available in the current year. For appropriation, cover those obligations, and that that'll come up with contracts and stuff like that, like I said earlier, that might be, we might have multi-year contracts and such. So you can either um have a provision in your contracts that essentially say, in the event that money is not appropriated available, that this contract is terminable. Or there is the possibility of the funds are available in that fiscal year for you to essentially pre-fund earmarked revenues from the year. That that contract is put into place to pay for it throughout its term. Don't recommend you do that, that's why I didn't actually put that bullet in there, because you really want to look at it on a year-by-year basis.
Hmm.
But then some of them, as I mentioned earlier, is gonna make sense to have multi-year obligations to certain contracts.
Hmm.
But each of those are gonna have yet for construction, especially construction projects or um, you know. Uh sometimes with I G As, like with the Justice Center building, the the I G A that was in into the the city originally for them to contribute towards that. You will always see these provisions in there that says that this is, you know, contingent one, funds being appropriated for this purpose beyond the existing fiscal year.
Hmm.
So uh how did you get around all that with your C O Ps?
It, well, there is language in there that does, to some extent, talk about this restriction, but also because C O Ps are allowed by statute, that code is an exception.
Hmm. Okay.
To this, and that's how we do it, alright, it's the code allows us, the state code allows us to do, it wasn't that we passed an ordinance to create the ability to do a C O P. The, you know, process, the code allows us to do that.
Code allows it, state statute allows it, was that a debrus mechanism, or did you just never address that?
Yeah, yeah. That wasn't a part of debrus then, no.
Hmm, that was um I think that was the one thing that uh Douglas Bruce did not think of when he created, yeah, dedicated for Tabor.
Yeah. Yeah.
Good.
Um here's one that comes up semi-opted, is that the B O C C doesn't have the authority over the day-to-day operations of the other independently elected officials. Because they have their own statutory authorities, and to some extent, in operate independently the B O C C's. And as you see, that's the clerk, recorder, treasurer, sustor, sheriff, foreman. So these dynamics, though, are not always clear, for example, the employees, you know, except for the elected officials, they're employees, their staff are employees of the county. And they are subject to the personnel, you know, rules and such of the county. Um and they're obligated to follow state federal laws regarding employment relations as well. So that means that you can't have an elected official who decides they don't want any mechanics working for them. And so they're not gonna open any of their positions to that, because that would be a violation of state and federal law. So they can't go that far in terms of dictating how their staff is handled. Now, we have had some some disagreements with some of the elected officials about how far that authority extends. In terms of their ability to create, hire, and fire member vehicles.
Watch breaks.
Well, the hours of their offices, that's something else, that technically under code, you set the operating hours for the county.
Hmm.
And technically, they're supposed to comply with that.
Hmm.
But they do.
And if they don't, well, then that's where, the unfortunate thing is when they don't comply, there's not always a lot of enforcement um opportunities you have. Allegations of non-feasance in office or, you know, just full violation of state or federal law isn't high on the priority list for the D A. So of course, and so that's that's where the ruck happens. But what you do have, um and and why it's important is we run into situations over the last couple of administrations. Where certain elected officials have decided that they have their own thiefting and they can do whatever they please, and it's resulted in lawsuits against the county.
Hmm.
Um especially employment-related lawsuits, and they're very expensive to go defend.
Hmm.
And ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, they get settled, because if you're an employer, especially employer like the county, you don't necessarily want. To have it out in the public purview that you discriminate against your employees or something to that extent. So even if they're frivolous claims, which they have all been, we defended them, but often, one of the issues with insurance coverage. Employer liability insurance coverage is that the insurance carrier will do the analysis of how much it's gonna cost to defend the case. And they will say, we wanna settle this, because it's gonna cost more than it should, and so typically settle.
And that's paid for out of the insurance pool, not directly out of taxpayer dollars.
Well, to some extent, there is a retention amount, I don't know about policy, so often, I think it's less than a fifteen thousand dollars or something like that.
Ten thousand dollars, yeah.
Is the county's initial deductible, you will retention amount that we have to to pay towards the cost of defending those claims. And the way it works is like, you know, they assign defense counsel, that's not something, if, for example, we have a lawsuit alleges discrimination. Um the insurance carrier will assign defense counsel for that, the county attorney's office does not defend those counsel for those type of cases.
Yeah.
Um we have input and we oversee it, and they don't always listen to us, but we don't actually provide the evidence on those.
Do our premiums rise when we when we have to defend?
It it's a little different, 'cause it has to be to the pool, and what would be interesting is at some point this year, I don't know when it'll be scheduled to come, but.
Okay. Yeah.
Our representative will come and talk with you about our loss records, if you will, in terms of our lost experience, our our experiences with claims and such over the past year.
Hmm.
And how that's, one of these is now, we're part of a pool of of different counties. So as part of a pool, you're swimming with everybody else, so it depends a lot on how many cases they get.
Yeah.
A big driver this last year were cases against law enforcement, sheriff offices and such. Um 'cause we had some unfortunate incidents in other counties that really dragged, you know, the expense of defending law theft claims and that type of thing. Of course, one we have had this year, we have had our unfair share of employment-related claims through the sheriff's office um with prior administrations. Thankfully, than their current administration, but prior administrations, we've had quite a bit of litigation, employment-related litigation.
So if we were to create a special taxing district for, say, law enforcement, public safety, that would be a time when the sheriff's office would potentially no longer be connected to county government?
Public safety.
And they would be financed through separate like property taxes?
So, yeah.
And then we would no longer be connected to the sheriff's office, for example?
Yeah, that that would take a bigger change, I think, than just, because the sheriff is a constitutional officer. And so whether or not they would join that district, obviously.
Oh, so it's up to the sheriff whether they would join the district?
Yeah, I don't know that, yeah, if they want to do that.
Okay. It's all hypothetical, it's true, I'm disturbed.
No, 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 it's a good question, because that is, you know, when you look at the expenses of Leveeville and Lake County for operating fire, rescue.
Hmm.
Law enforcement and such like that, at some point in time, it may counsel in favor of some sort of a district that way.
Okay.
But I think the sheriff would have to agree to become a part of that district.
And then the sheriff, every time the sheriff got elected, they would also have to agree? And if they weren't, they would have to be under the purview of the county?
They have, they'd be probably have the authority to withdraw from the district, but, so.
Okay.
Um, she is.
So we did a really great job, our H R director, of putting funding towards uh training of the staff and managers around harassment claims, et cetera. Works closely with the sheriff's office to try and mitigate the type of liability we could incur. So we're trying to hold on, but.
I will. Was.
Have to our own, you know, for the past three years, basically since I've started, we've had zero blowings.
Hmm.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's, I was gonna say, with both of us being more focused on risk mitigation and having other elected officials that are willing to listen and work with us.
Yeah.
On those issues, work with H R on those issues to help navigate them. Um I'm very pleased to say that all of our elected officials are on duty consulting regularly, when they have staff-related issues and stuff. So that we can talk through what the risk is, what the exposure is. Sometimes it's just counsel on them and the best way to handle situations, so they don't inadvertently step in a pile of the, so. Um but I I would say, you know, in here that elected officials departing from their official duties creates liability for the county.
Uh-huh.
When they do that, um the folks sue the county, they don't necessarily just sue the elected official.
Hmm.
Uh for example, you know, um employment-related lawsuits that arose out of the prior sheriff's administration, there were three of them. And they all sued both the sheriff and the board of county commissioners because of this last bullet in terms of your um. Your authority over the county budget, and sometimes we we talk about one way to influence, you know, relationships with the other elected officials. And and encourage their compliance with stuff is sometimes by saying, budgetarily, you all have that authority to to kind of bring that in. If they want to, for example, create new full-time positions, just because the bottom line of the budget says they have the money to do it. Then essentially, you have the authority, and you say, no, that is not in the authorized budget, which we'll talk about too, and therefore, no, you're not going to put it, so you have to.
Hmm. Chris, can I, I have a specific question, so um when it comes to cooperating with ICE. It's a state law that we do, that law enforcement does not cooperate with ICE.
That's correct.
So why was it not recommended, then, that we pass an ordinance to ensure that our employees do not cooperate with ICE? Because wouldn't that leave us open to lawsuits, specifically, A C L U, Colorado A C L U has said, if you don't do this, we're watching you. Like we are, like why would we not, why would we not do that just from a legal standpoint to like?
Because essentially, it's the state law that governs, and so passing an ordinance to essentially, use the phrase, or sometimes you use belts and suspenders.
Right.
Where you've got a state law that provides the belt to provide the support you need, you don't always need the enhancement of an ordinance.
Hmm.
And so.
Okay.
There's also more risk there at challenges to ordinances if they aren't crafted in a way to show that they will comply with state law. What else would you get from it, because right now, state law says they can't, they can't do that, so what else would you get from an ordinance that the state law is providing?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, that's why I'm, that's why I'm curious, like how do we protect ourselves legally from, like, Tim is not. I guess Tim is technically the supervisor of all of our deputies?
No, the sheriff is.
No, so I don't know, just I'm worried about that, I'm worried about us not complying with state law. So how do we, as a board, protect ourselves from the behavior of the sheriff's department, is my question? And if it's not an ordinance, then what is it that we can do?
So what I'll share with you is that fortunately, right now, we have a sheriff that's very engaged with this discussion, and he has consulted with me in terms of. Issues with detainees, who have open detention warrants, you know, from, you know, civil detention warrants from from immigration, natural condition.
Hmm.
Um to where what his ability is to not cooperate, how that expands. So there is no obligation to for them to do that, there's no obligation for them to detain. And ICE can, for example, come into this building, if they know somebody's in court or being detained, and say, you have to turn them over. You know, so there's no obligation for the sheriff to do that. And so I I don't, I I think the sheriff is doing a really good job of educating his deputies and his staff as to what their legal obligations are. So I'm not anticipating an issue with that, but on the other side, you need to be careful about ordinance that may hamstring, you know, them. From being able to do their the valuable.
So it's more of a relationship with the sheriff, that's our strongest lever?
No, state law is our strongest lever, in terms of, if if there's any indication that this sheriff is not complying with the state law. Then that's a claim that someone can bring.
But they bring it against the sheriff, not against the B O C C, that's like.
Well, and here's the, here's the thing, if a lawsuit's gonna be filed against the county, they're gonna need everybody in the world they can think of that might have power. And that's why the board of county commissioners, because you control the budget, will be named in any litigation, regardless.
Hmm.
And with the last one with the sheriff's office, we were able to successfully have the sheriff, the board board of county commissioners dismiss from that claim. Because we don't have day-to-day oversight over the sheriff's department staff.
Hmm.
So they have the authority to to essentially, you know, insert positions, especially hire and fire.
It is, I would too, I would I would say um. Reputation uh management, not only for the sheriff as an elected official, um but for his deputies, right? If there is a violation of state law, um those deputies lose their post, police officer standard training certification. Meaning they can no longer be a law enforcement officer in the state of Colorado, that follows them their entire career.
Hmm.
Sure, they could go to some Republican Sheriff's County and insistively and probably be hired sheriff.
Yeah.
But there's there's a whole chain of effects that um impact them as well from a law enforcement perspective.
Hmm. Yeah.
It is also their job to follow the law and enforce the law, um which is another aspect that the sheriff is coming from as well.
Right. Yeah.
When state and federal laws contradict each other, we defer to state law first?
If state and federal law relax each other.
Yeah, if they if they contradict each other, which I think, you know, we've seen some examples of, uh we defer to state law first?
Through our food chain, yeah, for lack of a better phrase, it's just that you would defer to the state, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. That illustrates it perfectly, thank you.
Because we're an arm of the state, so we are upholding state law.
Yes. Now, we'll we'll also talk about employment relations later, where there are certain instances where federal law does does supersede any state or local law.
So it can be, can be situated.
Alright, anything else on that in terms of your authority over the, your other elected colleagues?
I've got a lot. I just don't, I'm gonna take this in bite-sized chunks because, you know, it's a lot.
Yeah, any questions that come up and and clearly, this is not one and done.
Yeah.
So as we go, any questions that come up, please reach out and let's, let's talk through it.
And this is like in a packet that we'll be able to access again later to review and refresh, okay?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Okay, control other boards. Um, so statutory advisory board have their own organizational structures that govern their activities. And so you cannot like dictate operational controls outside of such structures. And that's why I was talking about if you want to develop advisory reports and stuff, part of that is they will have their own bylaws, charter, that type of thing that that essentially is the roadmap for how they will operate. You will be asked to approve the initial versions of those. If they're changed, like somebody comes back and says, you know, our bylaws are really old, they haven't been updated in, you know, twenty years or something, we want to do this and change some things. You'll be asked to approve those. But in terms of if there is an advisory board that you're just not happy with the way they're operating, you can't say, well, I want you to do this, that, and the other instead, if it's not within their existing charter models. You can request things of them and then it will be up to them as a board to determine whether or not they want to accept your request to change. So that, that's something, because that sometimes it's, you know, we've had situations where, especially with advisory boards, commissioners, individual commissioners might have something they want an advisory board to do or to take on or to focus on. And keep in mind, if there's one cliche um that we may need to carry with you as a reminder sometimes is one commissioner does not afford make. So you'd have to have at least one of your colleagues to agree with you if you want to make a change in terms of structure or operations, policy, procedure, that kind of stuff. And that applies to these boards as well. And a lot of the boards are statutory, so you know, they're created, they have their own statutory provisions that they have to comply with as well. Um, you can't discriminate against Lake County citizens or staff. This goes back a little bit to the conversation we just had. Forty-two U S D, section nineteen eighty-three, the Civil Rights Act essentially says any person who under color of law, which means elected officials, um, law enforcement officers and so forth, who causes a citizen, the other person be subjected to the deprivation of any rights, privileges, or immunities secured by the Constitution and laws shall be liable to that party in a civil action for regress. The other thing too is I will tell you, the lawsuits that we faced um with the prior sheriff's administration, they were not only named in their official capacity, but in some instances, you violate these kind of type of laws, you can be named in your personal capacity. And I would just say as an aside, um, if you haven't had conversations with you, the county covers, you know, you're insured and covered for your actions within your official duties and such, you might not have a conversation with your private insurance carriers as to if allegations are raised about activities that are outside of your official name base, if you will, if there's a company to treat you for defensive matters.
What matters is true?
It's homeowners or if you have a personal liability umbrella or something like an umbrella policy that covers all the, that kind of stuff. I hate to say this often, will come up in terms of if you're driving a county vehicle and found to have been under the influence or something like that and somebody was injured, whether your personal insurance will cover that in addition to the county or except of the county. Think about there. Um, even though employment of Lake County is at will, uh, the commissioners do not have the authority to hire and fire employees at will, with the exception of the county manager and the county attorney, because we by by co-servant pleasure of V O C C. And we both have employment contacts that that if you don't have copies of or haven't seen, we can definitely provide you with those that you know what the terms of our engagements are. Otherwise, any personal matters that you want to address, say you have an uncomfortable interaction with a staff member or you think a staff member's not doing the best they could do, that is not something that y'all should address directly with that staff member. Instead, you should come to Tim or direct to Lauren and say, here's what I experienced and I would like to talk through this. Then it'll be up to their supervisors, their managers to take those on and discuss those with the components of that operation. And one reason this is important too is because you don't want to get into a situation where someone alleges as an elected official you've engaged in inappropriate employment action against someone in your car.
Yeah.
And then to, you know, back to the one commissioner decision does not make, right? So if you, and we'll, and we'll talk about this more too, we we kind of go over the operating norms, like interactions with staff, but you know, one commissioner, you know, giving direction to staff, um, it's not a good thing. Uh, that it's just you telling someone what to do, and really, that needs to be a board decision that comes through me. It's also not fair to your colleagues on the board if you're like, well, I really just want to learn about this. That's great, but the board needs to get same information at the same time. So I think you would, we talked about it briefly on, you know, some of the, you know, the email communications and stuff. Like if, if one of you has like a super deep question on something, I'm gonna work with that staff member, get those questions answered, send it to you, send it to you, and send it to you. So you have that information. And then if the board would like a work session to take a deeper dive on that topic, right? Then it's the board getting that same information at the same time, so you guys can make an informed decision and vote and discussion, right, on why you're making that decision.
The other thing I'll say about that too, we have a lot of really great senior staff members here, have been with county for a long time. And remember the days when the three of you did run all of the different departments? And that used to flip-flop the first of each year as part of your first official action. You designate who would be over certain departments and such. And it led to what I call the mom and dad syndrome, where if they went to the commissioner that was over their department and got an answer they didn't like, but there was another commissioner who used to be over their department, they would go back and say, hey, they don't understand. And so they try to leverage that. That's something too, if you ever have staff members who come and express concerns with you about your employment situation or someone they're working with, Tim, me, whatever, your first, first reaction should be, have you gone to human resources today?
Hmm.
Cause that is the first place they should be taught to go. And human resources director will help navigate those issues.
The exception would be like if H R had an issue.
Yeah, if somebody had an issue with H R, then it would come to the county head. Yes.
The county manager.
Yeah.
Yeah. Department heads and such, so if, if the person had an issue with their department head,
Right.
the agency director or whatever.
Right.
Then they should be directed, I still say first to H R, unless it is with either Tim or me.
Yeah. Right.
You know, then they should go to.
Yeah.
To Tim.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing too is you create the employee handbook, essentially, it's already created, it's adopted. Um, each year, the human resources director, consultation with county attorney's office goes through and reviews it to know and make sure we're still compliant with the employment law. I, you know, I spent my early days as as a lawyer, I spent five years in, as an employment civil rights caution litigator. I defended and I represented employers, not employees. So the one thing I learned right out of that is employment law is constantly changing, constantly changing. So we have to each year look at our employee handbook to make sure you're still compliant with with the laws. And also, is it the best tool for managing the staff, the staff resources the county has, as well as retaining, attracting and retaining new staff? So a lot of focus is made with benefits and administration and the benefits and that type of thing. So each year, I, you can probably count on human resources coming to you with recommendations. There'll be a work session where they'll come and say, we reviewed the handbook, here are the things we recommend be changed for this next year. And typically, my recommendation is always start at the beginning of the year, try not to, unless it is a major change in law that goes into effect in July or something like that, try not to make changes in policy, procedure in the middle of the year. So we always try to roll those out at the beginning of January. So any questions?
Were there any major changes this year?
Benefit-wise, stuff especially, I've taken.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, we did have some benefit changes. It was actually over the, the past two years where the state uh made a lot of changes regarding H R law. Um, but there's always gonna be, you know, C T S I provides updates. We have various lifts served between county managers, H R directors across the state that provide those updates. Workers' comp changes, um, you know, a whole host of requirements, a lot of those for the past two years. But every year, you will see updates to the employee handbook.
Yeah.
Based on some new state laws?
Based on new state laws, um, based on, you know, emerging best practices um for things. Or also too, as we work through our policies, we can't think of everything, so something will come up where we're like, oh, that didn't make sense, um, or here's a better way to do it. So little staff will come to you guys with those recommendations or requests to change things.
Okay, and the big one here is you can't spend money that hasn't been approved in your budget. And in fact, in a contract, like if if there's something that hasn't been approved in the budget and you decide, oh, we want to do something, um, enter into a contract to perhaps try something big or shiny or whatever like that, city likes to do. Um, any contract that's not within the parameters of an approved budget is void, it means it's not enforceable and no county funds can be used for it. This is important too, and we'll talk this afternoon about the contract administration process. Any type of a contract that you want, that you want to bring forward and say, hey, I think we should do this, needs to go through the contract administration process and be approved. It's vetted to make sure it does fall within one of the buckets in the budget, this, such like that. And you can't just unilaterally sign off on a contract. It has to be be approved, because if it's not, it's void and they're not gonna get paid. So if you engage, you know, someone to come in and provide services for the county because you think it's a good idea and it hasn't fallen through the vetting process and been approved in a public meeting, then you're gonna end up with a very unhappy, because essentially at this point in time, there used to be a time where we'd get contracts and the commissioner had signed off and they're like, hey, the commissioner wanted me to do this, so you know, I've got a binding contract and I need to be paid for these services. That those days were looking on.
Or, yes, or other elected officials.
Yes.
Say, I have this contract with, say, a teabender.
Oh.
Yeah, well, well then, um, the board of county commissioners did approve, because that is your statutory authority. So they also may not do that. Uh, we've worked very hard to correct that behavior here.
Yeah. That is, we've had some really terrible situations where they've signed off on very expensive contracts that weren't budgeted because they're elected officials. And then there are arguments from the vendor of, well, we detrimentally rely. They're the elected official, we presume that they have the authority to do this. We didn't know that it wasn't approved and we provided all these services, so you need to to branch out for it. So we have tried to make sure everybody knows that y'all are the only ones that can approve contracts. You can delegate that authority. So for example, you might have the sheriff come and say, we've got something coming down the pipe. They'll present to you what the parameters are, it's a budgeted thing. And they may ask you to approve the contract and authorize them or Tim or somebody to sign the document when it actually comes out. So there are some exceptions, but at the end of the day, the bottom line is y'all are the only contracting authority to bind the county. Y'all are the only ones that can bind the county.
Would this be relevant if we were trying to figure out how to get more funding into, say, Roden Bridge or something like that?
It possibly could, but the next little point also talks about y'all inherited a budget. You didn't have, have the luxury of, you didn't have to give a lot of input into the budgets, you'll be operating under this year. So if there are things that come up that you decide, hey, we need to change this because I think more money should go to Roden Bridge, that is, you have that. You can make changes to it, but there's statutory requirements for that. And so my suggestion would be, if you have that, go to Tim and his finance director and they will work on how you go about accomplishing that goal or that priority for y'all.
And that, yeah, we will be, we'll be spending a lot of time with you guys walking through uh the twenty twenty-five budget as was adopted and then um the full process, or the full year-long process that we go through for the budget, then taking that deep dive into the twenty twenty-five budget, say, wow, I want to change this. Alright, we're gonna make the list and then we'll work through, um, you know, this, this quarter on how to amend uh the budget.
This next little bullet bullet point is important for just, keep in the back of your mind, misuse of public funds is a crime. Um, and there are a lot, I shouldn't say, there is a handful of folks in this community that seem to believe that everything that past commissioners have done was a misuse of public funds. So, but to to keep in perspective of you go and use your P card to take a trip to Vegas, that's a misuse of public funds unless it was for a budgeted or approved conference of national commissioners or something like that that justifies. It has to be something that's directly related to the services you provide in the county. Otherwise, it is classified felony, which includes up to three years in prison, fine up to a hundred thousand dollars plus. Part of that would be having to repay whatever funds were misappropriated. Um, but the good news about this is that Tim has worked incredibly hard with his staff and finance department to make sure that they are more robust in term financial controls. So yes, when the finance director comes or one of their staff members comes and says, we got this P card expense and it, I don't understand what it is. Or if you inadvertently make a mistake of, you're at a conference and you got to dinner and you put beer on your restaurant tab, you will be writing a personal check to reimburse the county for this. And so it's not personal, it's not intended to offend you, but it's also to help you avoid these type of inadvertent liabilities, because even if you make a mistake, there are people in this community who believe you have done it intentionally, so.
And there, uh, yeah, there have been, you know, I've made a mistake with my P card, so I had to write a check to Patrick, well, to Lake County government, uh, to reimburse. You know, it, it does happen, but that's why the receipt process, uh, especially for P cards and then invoicing for contracts, all of that is reviewed by multiple layers. So the ones that are questionable pop up and get to me. And then it's like, I need you to reimburse, or I'm just gonna withhold it from your paycheck.
Right.
So, uh, for instance, at our last meetings in Denver, we ate downstairs at the restaurant. Is there like a limit to, I mean, first of all, is, would I use my P card for that dinner? They supply breakfast and lunch. Presumably, I'm working and buying my own dinner, but then is there a limit?
Right, yeah.
So, um, part of our travel policy and then the P card policy, which we'll go into with uh county's financial director. Um, so in essence, to be able to justify per diem rate when you travel, um, you know, the federal government has rates for all these metropolitan areas, so Denver has one, right? But we request anyone going to a conference, I need to see your conference agenda and itinerary. Because if they provide breakfast and lunch, the county government is not going to reimburse you um for uh for that, for that per diem. We're also going to, you know, like disallow any P card purchases for that. Now, since you are at a conference for a work event, there is an amount, um, a per diem amount up to that you can spend and the county will reimburse you for, for that. There is also the option of using the P card for that, alright? But if you're gonna spend hundred and fifty dollars of dinner, be like, well, commissioner, who'd you take out? It was just me. Oh, commissioner, um, we need to see that receipt. Um, so there is, um, we work very hard on that for when folks go to conferences, because it is seen, it is seen as a benefit. Um, you know, it's not a right for people to go to conferences, but it is a benefit for staff to go and learn. Um, uh, and, you know, kind of, you know, for paying you in the mid-fifties, I'm sure we pay for you for three days to go to a conference or if it's kind of a word, curd as well, is one way to view them. But uh, but those are pretty explicitly laid out for staff whenever they leave the county on county business.
And the one thing I'd suggest, recommend to you is to not commingle your P card with your other kind of frequently-used credit cards and stuff like that. I don't really keep mine, any separate card is not in my, my everyday wallet. So I know that I'm not gonna inadvertently grab something, pay my, be like, well, no, no, I've done this.
Hmm.
Just a suggestion there. Um, the next one too is award contracts without due process. So the county has a procurement policy and a contract policy. And they were developed over a lot of time and effort to ensure that there was a fairness in the way that we engage the county spenders and our contractors and such. So they. The county vendors and our contractors and such, so they really need to follow the established procedures. Um, you can't pick and choose when you're going to apply that policy. So if you have somebody who's a buddy and they're like, hey, I can come do this for the county. Depending whether it falls in the procurement policy, the value of that contract, and you might have to go through an RFP process. Even if you're a community partner who's been helping the county and doing stuff for a really long time. You still have to have the fairness, the transparency of, there might be other vendors who could do this as well. So that's something, um, and also because we want to make sure you, one of your primary obligations is to be. Good stewards of tax money, you know, the taxes that the residents are paying. And the way you do that is by having policies and procedures, like the procurement policy that you follow. So it doesn't look like you're either engaging in nepotism or favoritism or anything like that. So the issue your decisions about how you're spending that money can be justified as reflected in the policy. Questions about that.
What about a land, what about a land lease? How many people, how do we, I get that we vote on that. But then who who signs what, or how many people need to sign it, and what amount or time?
It depends on, yeah, in in procurement, it will lay out, now again, contracts cut to yawn, so. When there are RFPs that are are issued, when the bids come back, they'll be presented to you. You'll be asked, you you'll get a recommendation from the staff as to after these bids have been vetted and so forth, recommendation is who they recommend. And the basis for those recommendations, who who they recommend be engaged. Technically, you don't have to accept their recommendation if you believe one of the other bidders is more appropriate. But typically for contracts, the chair signs contracts, or depending on the type of the contract, sometimes the county manager will sign contracts. Typically, those are the only folks, or another elected official, once their contract has been approved, you can authorize that to sign the contract. Yeah, so. Everybody signing stuff usually doesn't happen unless it's something like ordinances. You'll sign, I'll throw you, you'll sign, ordinances, some some resolutions, you will sign, some of those. Intergovernmental agreements, a lot of times it would be the nature of um. The endeavor, you will, as to whether just the chair or all three of you will sign those.
Okay.
Well, that's the first part of the statutory requirements and stuff, we'll go into detail on a lot of this other stuff more throughout the week, but any questions? For that last section. And you don't have to ask it today, as you go through and you think of stuff, please reach out. Um, you know, we'll talk to, uh, it's tomorrow about um communications, so the meetings, laws, public records and stuff like that. You know, just keep in mind, every email and text you write, regardless of whether it's from your county phone, your personal phone, your county laptop, your personal computer. Is subject to, or limited exceptions, so. I'm the one that has to fight for those exceptions, so I'm going to try to just stay within the confines of possible. But feel free to reach out with questions, you know, general questions are better than specific in terms of naming specific. People or vendors or that type of thing, um, just because of the the fact that it might be a public record, so it's subject to the exception.
How common is that to have our personal phones subject to court requests? And is it just like give us everything for the year, or does it give us certain emails? Did you write any emails to this person?
It depends on the scale of the person requesting the open record.
Let's say I have some off-color text with some old buddies from college.
Don't use your personal phone and computers for any county business, that's just the bottom line. Sometimes that might not be avoidable, but be cautious about that because in fact, your. Anything you use for county business is subject to disclosure potentially, as well as discovery and litigation. So we have these lawsuits, you know, if a lawsuit comes up by an employer or something, and they're they are going to allege, well, I think this was driven. By Commissioner so and so, and I have copies of a text or this, that and the other. When they find out that that text came from your personal phone, the court's going to order that personal phone turned over for a copy of what's said on there. So yeah, it, this is no small big deal. Fortunately, we've only run into that once um right now, and that actually to some extent is still with the Southern Fire Station litigation that was going on at Austin. That's why I say don't use it, and if you think you need to talk about something that might be inflammatory or controversial, do not put it in writing. Have conversations, verbal conversations first before you put anything in writing. Because the the rule of thumb for anything put in writing. Before you hit send, think about it, are you going to be comfortable reading that out loud? On the witness stand in front of a judge and jury and potential university?
About recording conversations, if you think you're going to have a contentious, is there a rule against that or is it precedent for that?
Colorado law is only one person has to consent to a recording, so not just, and you have to be aware of that for conversations you have among other people.
Yeah.
Who may very well be recording those conversations. But yeah, there's a double-edged sword with recordings, because sometimes they help you, in most instances, there are going to be parts of it that you'd be like, ooh, I should add some of that.
Yeah.
And it's, yeah, and you can always, if I was to ask, I feel awkward at the beginning of a conversation, you can always ask, is this being recorded? Because the other party is supposed to tell you yes.
Yes.
Because if they try and use it later on, um, you know, like for example, Finn, the Herald Democrat reporter, he's always recording.
Yeah.
That, I'd say that's kind of a given, but other other folks in the community or around the state might not be. Using it for for work purposes, and I think that's i- i- an important thing, I think it is good to record and post the work sessions, but I would just continually. Remind folks in the community, like, this is your guys' opportunity to learn. And it's a weird thing in American politics that you can't change your mind. But the work session is also a place for commissioners to think about things, and then maybe you do change your mind on something, they're like, oh yeah, we should move forward with that, or, oh no, we should not move forward with that. So sometimes people will try and use the recording of a work session, be like, well, you were in a work session, you said you liked that. You know, that was four months ago, and since then, I've had eight other work sessions to talk about this topic, and I came to this decision. So just something else for you guys to think about.
And the other question about with the, what's subject to disclosure, the. Colorado legislature has not helped us out much with trying to restrict the ability to use Cora in certain circumstances. Colorado Supreme Court recently ruled that Cora can be used even when litigation is pending. As a way to get records and such that would bypass the discovery process. Because during discovery, you have a limited number of records you can request, questions you can ask, depositions you can take. But you want to sue somebody or you file a lawsuit, you can come and ask for a court request of all this information. To give you a head start on that, so that you can more narrowly define and tailor your formal discovery in the litigation. Now technically, you have to pay for that, the staff time, if it's a huge request and a big volume of information. And guarantees can be cheaper than the lawyer sitting in that deposition with the, you know, the transcriber. And all the different parties and stuff to do it, so we're going to see a lot more Cora requests as we're solving that, talking about that more.
Cool. So also this year, we've been working on our retentions policy, retention policy, for how often we just do this to delete uh. County documents, et cetera. Um, I know in my past life, I sent a lot of Cora requests from like G chat. Text messages, personal, like, you know, where a lot of people will ask for it, so make sure you delete, which is okay to, yeah, text message.
Yeah, because we've we've also had an unfortunate circumstance, if we can't prove that we have a record retention. Policy that says after a date certain, one day longer, we're going to retain those records, and we happen to have records back beyond that, we have to provide those records as well.
Yeah, so if you think of that, you know, Commissioner Mudge and Commissioner Marcela's emails, Commissioner Marcela worked at the county prior to becoming a commissioner, so it's sixteen years worth of emails. Commissioner Mudge is eight years. We have worked through, you know, some of our old like finance and HR stuff, do I need employment records from the seventies? I don't know. Do we need uh twenty twenties budget? Sure, good historical information, but like, it's recorded, it's kept in the clerk's office. I don't know. You know, some of those things.
A little bit to this, uh, CPD, if you have people approach you about land use applications or zoning or et cetera. Um, here are a bunch of uh cards to just give people to refer them to CPD, and they can give them the information they need about that appropriate process to go through. Uh, planning and zoning, so it needs to be your house. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll talk about ex parte communications, I think tomorrow.
Thank you.
And that, yeah, and that, um, there are times, I know, it is, um. Can be frustrating as elected officials, sir, I want to do this, it's like, um, yes, commissioner, but state statute says this. Um, so. We're here to be your cheerleaders, but also your reminders of like, hmm, dude. There's there's a procedure for a reason, I understand it's annoying, um, we're we're here for you, and to protect that liability uh of the county.
Yeah, you just need to be aware of what conversations, you know, what time they need to happen, and instead of just, oh, hey, how's it going?
Yep.
Blah blah blah.
Yes.
Which is how I've approached my whole life, you know, you just talk to people and conversate and communicate. There's just a different set of timeline and order now that we have to adhere to.
Yeah.
Especially with land use stuff.
Yeah. Um, yeah. Um, all right, well, so with that, so this, um, so you guys will have your elected's lunch. And then this afternoon, we'll go over cultural norms of Lake County, and kind of how the the board does business, going over regular meetings, work sessions. Property rules of order, that kind of stuff.
Contract administration.
Contract administration. Tomorrow, um, sunshine laws and commissioner ethics, and then the budget overview in the afternoon.
Elected's lunch.
Yes.
That's straight down.
Yeah, noon, yeah, I think uh the sheriff's going to come up, I think Patrick, the treasurer's going to go, I think Mark will go too. Um, he's quality time with the coroner as well. Yeah, uh, we got, I guess, got some other to learn about those things. On Thursday, um, we will start our department trainings, so the county manager's office, county attorney's office, HR. Some administration administrative things, finance, and then we're going to have an all-staff potluck at Sixth Street Gym. So bring your big best dish to share. I'm going to make tacos, pork tacos. It's not a competition.
She could have some, I'm buying some quick cookies.
Yeah.
Somewhere between those, somewhere between those two.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Um, the afternoon on Thursday, um, we'll work on elected offices, we'll have the assessor, treasurer, clerk and recorder was invited. Uh, the coroner, the sheriff, the DA, and then kind of a retouch on the B O C C. You know, we can help kind of provide some context of where you guys really engage with each office or. Also how important it is that each office works together, so for example, your partner passes, um, and you need to change the deed on your property. You need the assessor, the treasurer and the clerk and recorder's office, so kind of those things and the service levels to the community. Friday, your first decision-making meeting, so we went over that uh agenda a little bit, we can go over that agenda more. Annual appointments, operating hours, um, fun things like that. And then in the afternoon, um, we're going to continue with department trainings with uh water resources, public works and transit. Um, and then on uh. Friday as well, we'll do the calendar review for the next week, so we do have some things laid out. But of course, is that the discretion of the board, if you guys want to change some things, that is fine, we can move things around, um, but we'll go over the calendar review. Excuse me, on Friday as well. And then to end a work session, um, all you got to say is what time it is and that you are ending this work session.
It's eleven forty seven AM, and this work session is finished.
Thank you very much, commissioners.